Clerk, if you will please read the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Here. That brings us down to announcements. I'm not going to make any tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the agenda. Well, we're not going to do announcements either. Commissioners, the agenda is in front of you. If I can have a motion for acceptance, Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that the agenda be approved.
Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any further comments?
None.
Commissioner Frazier?
No.
All those commissioners in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no. Hearing none. Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to boards and committees, and we are welcoming Nicole Gerley-Russ to the Downtown Development Authority. Nicole, if you could meet me up at the podium, please.
It is always a great time to celebrate when we can welcome somebody new to one of our boards and committees in the city. These are folks that really make the city work. They really get behind the wagon and don't push. And I cannot be more enthusiastic with bringing great people on board like Nicole, who we can look forward to hopefully for years of service. And as in memory of that, pin for you, this is an official City Marquette pin, and I have it on good authority that if you wear it, you have superpowers. Use it with the...
Thank you. As a Marquette resident for many years, born and raised here, moved away and returning home, or returning north, as they had said last week, I am very pleased and honored to have the opportunity to serve as the newest DPD board member, and I look forward to helping build Marquette to be the big, bold, beautiful city that it is. Thank you, everybody.
This brings us to our first public comment period. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making comments. Public comment is open.
Good evening. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I'd like to reserve time to comment on New Business Item Six, New Business Item Eight, and New Business Item Ten. And in terms of old business, I'd like to remind everyone here that the city of Marquette now has a beach-accessible wheelchair located at Clark-Lambros Beach Park on the way to the island. As long as there's lifeguards at that station, there's someone there to unlock the chair for use. There's no cost to use the chair, and it's also available to residents and to non-residents. So please get the word out, especially if you know people who are traveling who'd be interested in something like this. We've had it in operation since July 4th, and I understand it is being used. I just want to make sure people know about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in the city of Marquette. I guess first off, I'd like to talk about number three, or have time for three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Thank you. I come up here, though, because I, not because of this agenda, I actually was kind of offended with the last meeting that happened. And this has been building up. I haven't made it to a couple of meetings, so I've only been able to watch it online. But that's a record. I mean, that's an actual permanent record of what goes on. And I have to admit, I, Ms. Hill, you asked a direct question to the city attorney, assistant city attorney at the time, and basically you both got cut off. And I'm kind of annoyed by that, because that was a very important question about the rules, the new rules about marijuana use, recreational, adult recreational marijuana use for cities and municipalities. So that was a very important question, and Mr. Stonehouse was able to formulate a question so that the only thing the city attorney could say was no. Or yes, actually, to a negative type of question. The question basically was what kind of rules have changed? And y'all kind of figured out that the assistant city attorney, I don't know why the assistant would not know as much as the attorney, but the assistant city attorney doesn't know anything. And I have to just say, she was here as a representative of the city. If she's asked a direct question, please let her answer a direct question. I don't think she knows less because she's an assistant. I actually think she knows just as much, if not as more, because that's the way things work in the legal field. You need a team. And I'm very happy with our legal representatives, and I would have loved to heard some of the questions or some of the answers. Comes down to, though, the city of Marquette could immediately receive revenue from requests for permits. That's how this kind of thing works. If we have a, and here I am, I'm talking about something I don't really want to talk about. Anyways, if we have a ban on adult recreational use here in the city of Marquette, we could, nobody can apply for any permits. They get denied right off the bat. So if somebody wants a festival, that's a $1,000 permit that the city receives as well, and then you can charge whatever you want for the fairgrounds, you can charge whatever you want for the rules. But the rules and regulations for that festival itself are already set in place. They've got some pretty good rules there. But if you automatically have a no and a ban on it, that means all those sellers cannot make a application fee. That means all those festival holders cannot make an application fee. That means all those ticket sales cannot be part of a fee. I am asking that you literally let the lawyer answer the question of what Ms. Hill asked last week. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Frank Jeffero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on Items Six, Seven, Eight. These are my opinions. Mr. Stonehouse is thanked for wanting to keep the focus on marijuana, but we've heard no update on that, the power plant demolitions, the ugly fence at Lighthouse Park, or the tombolo, as yet more Shira's Park trees fall to this board's negligence. We have a continued problem with the manager speaking during meeting discourse, this time to the female attorney. Snickering with her was more important than what Mr. Schlegel, Ms. Brum, a presenter, or I had to say. He's been asked previously to save his goofing around until after the meeting. His behavior is not only rude, but very distracting. He even goofed off during comments that applied to him, such as the demise of our beach grass and museum drive. Everyone whom I've spoken to feels Mr. Stonehouse's vote was a conflict of interest regardless of whether money changed hands. We love the museum, but to be fair, they need to pay for the portion of the project that solely benefits them. Actually, a million dollars did change hands from College Avenue, and that ugly fence is still there, restricting the use of our park. Removing that fence was the people's priority. I suppose the manager whispered during that request, too. The chair was responsible for keeping his panel and the audience under control, yet he too conducts unrelated work during public comment, despite that the rules dictate all discourse passed through him. June 8th, he granted a doctor 10 seconds beyond his allotted time while he cuts off the people he dislikes at zero seconds. He then addressed the doctor's concerns, as well as a woman's, before the designated time, which he doesn't do for most of us. He also forgot to call her back to the lectern so the exchange could be recorded. We keep documenting examples of this man not handling participants equally. The same mentality applies to another doctor, whom Mr. Frazier indicated is well-known to this board. That explains why Mr. Campana sought to violate the rules to get a poll signed up two weeks earlier, even after being told this violated due public process. I favor the poll sign as much as Mr. Campana, but he literally acted as if this was the most important matter he ever addressed, more important than Shira's Park eroding away. Mr. Frazier messed up by saying that the members knew this doctor, and that he's fun to talk to, as if it's okay to make provisions for a friend that might not be offered to those less hitched in. This is reminiscent of the South Shore residents who have apparent pull, such that the manager wasted $4,000 of public funds to remove every tree from South Beach Park. The manager had best listen up to let the attorney focus on the allegations and bring that obnoxious snickering to a halt. Our public is urged to help us procure an attorney or to get involved in order to pursue justice, so everyone is treated equally and public concerns are handled by importance rather than who's making the request.
Anyone else to address the commission?
Hello. Michelle Thomas, 203 East Arch, here in Marquette. I'm here on behalf of the Veridia Group to answer Commissioner questions on Item Number Eight.
Hi, I'm Jeff Katzen with Founder's Landing, and I'm here answering questions as well on that agenda item.
You'll have to forgive me. I came here a little unprepared and a little unaware. My name is Bonnie Mann. I live at 412 South Front Street. It's come to my understanding that there's a vote concerning a 500 condo development being voted on tonight. I may be incorrect, but I know that it is an issue. I'm shocked to hear about this. I was very hurt. As a young laborer, I do not qualify for affordable housing, yet nor do I, can afford, pay, do I make enough to live in these condos. I understand that we need development, but I think that creating that isolated, unaffordable housing for people like me instead of building quality neighborhoods is not the right way to go. I ask of all of you, how do you want this city to look in 100 years? How are the lake levels going to affect us in 100 years? Are you thinking about how that is going to affect us? I feel I speak for many of my development, my generation, in that these developments are pushing us out. I also understand that we need development. I do not think that condos and properties are the right way to do this. I also understand that the marijuana laws and the money from marijuana will be going straight to the street and not redistributed into our community. Why are we not pushing for these taxes to be directly infused into our community? I know that there are only property taxes that support this city, and I'm looking, I'm asking you to seek alternatives to just simply building condos along the lakeshore, which you not build communities, which you not propagate the environment, and I do not believe are effective in building the city that we want to be. And that's about as far as I got. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission?
Who would like to speak about it later?
Which items you want?
Item Number Eight, sorry.
Seeing none, public comment is closed. One more?
Lisa Alexander, 920 Orianna Drive in Marquette, and just reserving the right to have public comment on Item Number Eight. Thanks.
Now we have nobody left, right? Okay, public comment is closed. That brings us down to a special presentation by Chief Blake Reball.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm excited to be here tonight with members of Charter Spectrum and our K-9 program to secure some funding to continue the great program that we have. I would like to first introduce a couple people that are important to this program, Officer Todd Collins and his K-9 Scud, and if you guys could come over here, Todd, and then Officer John Waldo and K-9 Nitro. I'm also going to introduce Gail Anthony from the Community Foundation of Marquette County. If you want to come up real quick, Gail. Gail was instrumental in working with us and Charter to secure this generous donation. At this point, I would like to introduce Marilyn Passmore. She's the State Director of Government Affairs for Charter Spectrum, and she will introduce her team. Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening. As Chief mentioned, good evening, Mayor, members of the commission, distinguished guests, and our Charter colleagues from many points around the country that have been coming for tonight's presentation. As the Chief mentioned, I'm a dog lover, so I have to look at these handsome boys. My name is Marilyn Passmore. I'm the State Director for Charter's Government Affairs here in Michigan. And before I introduce our folks that are here and make the check presentation, I just want to speak a little bit about Charter, who we are and our presence nationally and in Michigan. Charter provides our services in 41 states, and our fiber-rich network passes 53 million homes and businesses with 28 million customers. We have a significant local presence in Michigan with 1,900 of our 98,000 employees right here in the great Wolverine State and about 41 in the greater Marquette area. 12% of our U.S. employees are veterans, and we're growing. We're adding another 20,000 U.S. jobs. He's got his ball. As your local service provider here in the UP for well over 30 years, we're very proud of our fiber-rich network, and we offer residential speeds that start at 100 megabits per second and are scalable up to 1 gigabit per second. So you heard that right. Marquette is a gig city. All the cities that we serve across the state and our footprint are gig cities, and we're very excited about that. He's so excited, he can't stand it. On the business side, our network is scalable with up to 100 gigabit symmetrical speeds for businesses that require those speed lifts. So as you can imagine, it takes a tremendous amount of capital, both employee and capital investment, to build, operate, secure, and maintain our network. We've invested over $32 billion in the last five years in our network across our 41 states. So when you think about Michigan and you think about how far and wide the state is, Charter's network actually goes as far north as all the way to Alaway in the Kibana, and as far south as Monroe, across the Coldwater, Grand Haven, up the lakeshore to Manistee, come circle back around to Mackinac City, going down the other side, you've got Alpena, Bay City, the Tri-City Saginaw, et cetera. So we have a very, very vast network with over 800 communities served in Michigan. So at this time, it's my privilege to introduce to you one of our colleagues, our Charter's group Vice President of Corporate Physical Security, here from Stanford, Connecticut, Ms. Jane Rhodes.
Thank you, Marilyn. This is tough, right, to be onstage with two dogs. I know if our dog were here, he would be nowhere near as well behaved as these two, but aren't they cute? So I have the greatest job, I think, within Charter, and especially tonight as well, too. So our, my team, we manage all the security, physical security matters that face our employees at our facilities on a regular basis. So thank you, Mayor, and everybody else for allowing us to come tonight and make this presentation. So we were honored to meet the Chief a few months ago, who demonstrated a need that one of these dogs, believe it or not, will be retiring at some future date, but certainly very energetic tonight. So our team is able to make a donation to the foundation that will allow to fund a future K-9 officer. And what's vital is that these K-9 officers are important for both public safety and the safety of the officers as well. So we are honored to be able to do that. I myself grew up in Michigan, grew up down in East Lansing area. So I said to some folks earlier, it's good to be back where a pop is a pop and tennis shoes are tennis shoes, they're not sneakers. So it's great to be home and to be in the great state of Michigan. So we are honored to support the Marquette Police Department. I know, baby, you're just, as I'm talking, you are as well, too. But Charter has a commitment to law enforcement in many different ways. We rely on them every day to do our job, and we understand the concerns and the threats that you face. But this new dog, when he comes on board, will be both a K-9 and a personal, or I should say narcotics and a personal assist dog. So we're proud to be here. And also, as you will know, the dog's getting a very fancy Spectrum bed. So you can't, you can't beat that. So again, we welcome the opportunity to be here today, and we're honored to be able to participate and serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. If everyone would please join me in welcoming from Congressman Berkman's office, Mr. Paul Flint to make a few comments.
Well, I want to thank all of you for having me, and on behalf of the Congressman, Congressman Jack Berkman, I just wanted to say this is an awesome thing from Spectrum to be donating this to a great cause and for the city and all of our, all of our well-being and the safety of all of our citizens. So that's, that's all I got. So, excellent.
Thanks so much. We're not, promised not going to be long speeches. From Senator Peters' office, we've got Caitlin Rader. If you would join us, Caitlin, I know you wanted to make a few comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having me here tonight. Residents of Marquette City, I know this is very exciting to our officers and our K-9 unit officers. Chief, thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of United States Senator Gary Peters. My name is Caitlin Rader. I'm his Upper Peninsula Regional Director. I would not have missed tonight for anything else. Thank you to Charter for this donation. This is crucial for our city. The Senator is going to continue to push on a DC aspect side of funding for our police services and our K-9 services, but we couldn't have something in Marquette like this without you. What an incredible donation. So thank you so much, and I really appreciate being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Caitlin. I'm not sure if Senator Stabenow's staff was able to get here. I know they had someone committed, but I didn't make contact before I came in the room, so. Okay, thank you. So I don't want to leave till last minute, but certainly not least, 38th District State Senator Ed McBroom.
Thank you very much, Counsel. It's great to be with you today. And Mr. Mayor, thanks for allowing me to be here and for the invitation. Chief, thank you. You know, I think we all recognize the continued danger that many of our communities face with the growing sophistication that comes with crime right now, drugs and other things, and the important role that the K-9 units play. Thank you very much for what you all do to keep us safe. And it's really wonderful that Charter recognizes that, and Charter's been a company that's long held a place in its heart for the rural communities, and we appreciate that. And it's so good to see your willingness to step up and help us with this great need that the city of Marquette has, and the assistance that Marquette provides to other communities around is something that we all need. So I'm blessed to be here and be a part of this today, and thank you for the invitation, and thank you for what Charter's doing for the community.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So obviously, we can't get everybody up here by the check for a picture, but I thought if we could have the Mayor come up and join us with the members of the officers here, and Jane, and members of our special guests from the various offices, including the Senator, we'll get up with the dogs, take a picture, and we'll let you get back to your scheduled programming. So maybe we'll pull that back. Matt gives us a little more room. Come on up in here.
I can never, I can never be in the back.
Get the tall people in.
You need to be. I think I'm too short.
Just one, one quick, one quick note. I'd like to also thank Sean Tobes for all he did in facilitating this relationship with Charter. So thank you, Sean.
Well, that was extraordinarily pleasant. That brings us to Item Three, which is the Consent Agenda. Ms. Ludenberg, I had a note that you wanted to speak to the Consent Agenda. We do not allow speaking to Consent Agenda items. If you wish to speak to the entire agenda, you may, but only in a conceptual fashion. Let me check with...
What we've, what the commission allows is if you want to talk on the Consent Agenda items, you use that time during public comment that is before the Consent Agenda.
Correct.
And that's why we moved it in there.
Correct. So in effect, you cannot reserve time on a Consent Agenda. You may during public comment on whatever you would choose. I explained that badly, but thank you, Mr. Attorney. Commissioners, Consent Agenda, if I may have a motion for acceptance, Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any other comments?
None.
Mr. Frazier, none. Any other commissioner?
Looks good to me.
Seeing none, all those commissioners in favor?
It's a roll call, Your Honor.
Oh, that's right. We do need a roll call on this, because we do have one item in there that is a resolution. That's Item 3K. So we will do a roll call on it. Clerk, if you will please conduct a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to unfinished business, and that's Item Number Four, Parking Lot Easement Agreement. Madam Clerk, if you would please read the background.
Thank you, sir. Background. Since the 1970s, Marquette County has rented the city-owned parking lot at the southwest corner of Berega Avenue and Third Street. The county utilizes all 12 parking spaces in the lot and annually pays the city $4,320 or $30 per space per month. Despite the longstanding agreement, it was recently determined that no formal agreement exists. City and county staff has worked together to draft the attached lease agreement for the parking lot. An overview of the proposed lease, three-year agreement that automatically renews for three-year terms, can be terminated by either party on 60 days' notice, includes an annual payment of $3,600. The per-space rental is the same as in the past, but the recent construction on Third Street has reduced the number of available spaces from 12 to 10. With notice, the city can increase this rate upon the automatic three-year renewal. County is responsible for short-term maintenance, including striping and snow removal. This agreement was approved at the June 18th meeting of the Marquette County Board of Commissioners. As required by Section 10-3E of the city charter, this lease can only be approved by the city commission upon a second read, and this item was first introduced during the commission's July 8th regular meeting. Fiscal effect, the city will receive $3,600 annually. Recommendation: Approve the parking lot, parking lease agreement with Marquette County and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the parking lot lease agreement with Marquette County and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Is there a second? Commissioner Campana?
I would second that.
Commissioner Smith, any further comments?
Seems to be a longstanding agreement and some additional revenue for the city.
Commissioner Campana?
It's good to have an agreement, since there is presently not one, so.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. That brings us down to Item Five, which is the Founder's Pile of Reuse Construction Contract. Clerk, if you will please read the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. As part of the Brownfield Plan for Founder's Landing, various public improvements were agreed to be made and funded through the plan. The final public improvements required for the Founder's Landing Development Project include redevelopment of the pier and reuse or removal of the existing piling structures. The project area is located on Lake Superior, east of and adjacent to the Founder's Landing Development, and south of the Lower Harbor Wardock. The north set of piles are directly east of Berega Street, and the south set of piles are east of the Hampton Inn. GEI Consultants of Marquette was contracted to conduct a feasibility study in August of 2018 and found reuse of the piles as two public piers to be feasible. The city commission held a work session on the subject on April, in April of 2019, where GEI presented the pier concepts and findings of its feasibility study. At its March 4th, 2019, regular meeting, the city commission approved GEI consultants for the primary preliminary design phase for the Founder's Landing Pier Project. Since that time, the public has had opportunities to comment on the ongoing design at the Harbor Advisory Committee, Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, Market Public Art Commission, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board...
Market Public Art Commission, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and through the current Community Input Survey available on the city website and through Facebook. A work session with the city commission, GEI consultants, and the Durocher Marine Division of Coquassing Industrial was held on May 22nd, 2019, where the preliminary design and budget was presented. Out of that session, there was the consensus that costs could be reduced if the southern pier would be shortened by one section and the construction timeline were to be extended over two seasons. Having determined that there was no advantage to competitive bidding because of the work already completed by Coquassing in conjunction with GEI and corresponding savings by combining the Prescott Island Marina and Founder's Landing Pier Project, the city commission waived the bidding process and awarded the construction contract to Coquassing Industrial, Durocher Marine Division for construction of the piers at a not-to-exceed fee of $5,670, $5,670,000 at the May 28th, 2019 regular meeting. Staff has worked with the city attorney and Coquassing Industrial to develop the contract. Fiscal effect, adequate funding has been allocated through the Founder's Landing Brownfield Tiff Plan. Recommendation, approve the construction contract with Coquassing Industrial, Durocher Marine Division effective after approval of the EGLE and USAEC permits for construction of the pier at a not-to-exceed fee of $5,670,000 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement after permit approval. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Ms. Luttenberger, did you ask for time?
Thank you. Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. I've come up a few times to speak about these before, these piers before. Today, this morning, I walked down, and, and this goes back to last meeting, the offense that I kind of felt last meeting when a gentleman came up here and stood dead-faced and looked at you guys for over a minute and a half, asking you about parking down here at this pier, pier project. And I understand tonight, you're not talking about the actual parking or any kind of usage of it. But I went down there this morning to get some sunrise photos. And I have to admit, the parking spots that might be used for recreation of this kind of thing, there's no, there's no buffer until the, till the wall of the construction site. So, it feels like you're actually pulling into a stripe that says, "No parking here," because they're kind of narrow, and you don't have an actual buffer at the end to stop on. So, if you have a kayak on your car, there's no way you're walking that anywhere. I mean, you're out, you're, you're sticking out just because you have to use it as space. So, I don't think those are parking spots. My point is, on this Founder's Landing Pier reuse, when I finally did get down to the boardwalk, and I, I pointed this out a few times, where after 10 years, I've counted over 30 boards that have to be replaced this year alone, or were replaced in the last five years. Nonetheless, there are spots where the water has yet to recede, and we now have broken pilings. We now have broken wood boards that are used for the boardwalk. First question is, how quickly are those things going to be replaced? And is that, could that be part of this reconstruction project, where we're tying them both into the horseshoe and not just two piers? But the second question is, if that's the way our water flows on the boardwalk currently and on Lake Superior, which by the way, Lake Superior is up against the cement mooring dock. So, its water is literally, not even a fingertip below the ridge line. So, that spot where we were supposed to park bigger boats or more secure boats with the actual big anchors, or the, the rope line things, that has literally a toe width. You could curl your toes over and be in Lake Superior. So, that's how high our water is right now, and there's records, there's stories about it. I, I'm wondering if the Founder's Landing Pier Reuse Construction Contract has taken into effect a, as was said earlier, 100-year flood, 150-year flood. What are the water levels that you're associating with for this project? Because some of this project requires access to water lines. And if that's the case, right now, my boat, if I put it on that, my kayak, if I put it on that ridge line, that cement ridge line, I'm stepping up into my boat. So, keep this in mind. I don't know what you're going to do about this, but it seems like we need some more discussion about it. And do your thing.
Thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Mr. Campana?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the construction contract with Coquassing Industrial, Durocher Marine Division, effective after approval of EGLE and USAEC permits for construction of the piers at a not-to-exceed fee of $5,670,000 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement after permit approval.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd second the motion.
Commissioner Campana, further comments?
None, other than we need this to keep the project moving along.
Commissioner Schlegel?
I would concur with that.
Any other Commissioner? Commissioner Hill?
Um, I do, is the survey still open on the design? Can anyone answer that question? Just curious.
I believe it is closed.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And, um, do we want to, do, does, is there anyone who can come in on the, on the high lake levels here? And, um, speak to what's being done to address them? Can I?
I can comment on the project itself. When you look at that site, it's best to look at the existing boardwalk to get a feel for where these piers would sit. So, the level of the piers would be at the level of the existing boardwalk, which is about four and a half feet above lake level. The cement area where we had in the past rented to two boaters is substantially lower than that. And then, as far as the transient boater parking that would be included in this, that would be a section that would be floating piers that are attached to this pier, so they'd move up and down with the lake levels as they went, so.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further comments? Mr. Frazier?
Lake levels aren't very high. When that concrete dock was built many years ago, lake levels are a lot lower. Now, docks will, of course, the, the boardwalk is a lot higher. It's still above water. And if you look, if you kind of take a look, the, the old board, piling is still, the old docks are still way above water. So, I'm sure the engineering firms, the contractors will figure it all out and they'll get it done right. And should be a lower level for putting kayaks and stuff in anyway. I mean, with a concrete dock level, it's a good place for putting kayaks in now because you want a lower area with the water, put the kayaks in.
Any other Commissioners? Seeing none, are we ready for a vote? Okay. All those Commissioners in favor of this motion, in other words, voting yes, please signify by voting yes. Yes?
Yes.
Any voting against the motion, signify by voting, or by voting no. Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. That brings us down to new business, and specifically, the Prescott Island Forest Management Plan. Clerk, if you would please read the background.
Thank you Mayor. Background. Prescott Park has been managed by the city of Marquette over more than a century in a manner congruent with Frederick Law Olmsted's recommendation. Preserve it, treasure it, as little altered as may be for all time. Over the years, the city has worked through the challenge of balancing preservation of this amazing piece of pristine forest, with pressures on the resource resulting from ever-increasing popularity and visitorship. City staff felt it necessary to enlist the assistance of a professional forester to help define the trajectory of the forest, outline threats to its, to its health, and identify management strategies to best preserve the park into the future. The fiscal year 2019 budget includes a forest management plan for Prescott Park. City staff entered into a contract with Caretaker Forestry in the amount of $2,000 for services to apply for a forest stewardship outreach and education grant on behalf of the city and to write a forest management plan that meets all the requirement of that grant program. The grant will pay for $1,387.50 of Caretaker Forest fees, forestry's fees, while the city will match the grant with $612.50. The Prescott Park Advisory Committee and city staff reviewed the draft, draft plan in May 2019 and offered suggested changes. The final draft was reviewed and recommended to the city commission by PiPAC at their June 12th, 2019 meeting. Major threats outlined in the plan are limited to fire and wind damage, while minor, minor threats include invasive species, overcapacity, deer herd impacts, direct damage to tree and understory health, and possible disturbance of cultural resources. It should be noted that with a few natural, natural exceptions, most threat to the health of the forest results from human visitor activity, and the plan recommends managing these threats through a variety of policy enforcement strategies and education campaigns. Major human impacts include fire caused by smoking and campfires, invasive species being imported, and feeding the wildlife resulting in populations that exceed the carrying capacity of the resource. Other human impacts identified in the plan include bicycles and hammocks damaging the resource and people impacting the cultural and historical resource through artifact collection and metal detecting. The recommendation with the most impact on the park is development of a fire suppression slash prevention policy. In addition to reducing human impacts, the policy would involve minimal reduction of live and dead fuel in the pine stands. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation, adopt the forest management plan as presented. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Mr. Swenson, I think we have a presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioners. We're happy tonight to present to you a brief summary of the plan as it's been presented to you in your packet. I have with me tonight Jim Ferris of Caretaker Forestry, and he will be assisting with this presentation, kind of answering some of the questions as we go along. So, as I said, Jim was contracted with the city, Caretaker Forestry was, to complete this, this plan. The program is actually through the United States Department of Forest Service Stewardship Program, which is, is administered by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. And this being a recreation-based property, it's a little different than what you might see through, through, you know, your common forest management plan. But I'll let Jim talk just a little bit about why this program was, was chosen and why this was a good fit for the island.
So, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. The Prescott, as you know, the jewel of Marquette, is, is primarily a forested property that the primary purpose is recreation. Unlike most other forest management properties that I look at and that other people, that you perhaps own or other people own, most of those properties have a broader, maybe a timber aspect, and they have other objectives in the ownership. Prescott, on the other hand, is, is really uniquely best suited to serve recreational interests. So, it's, it's different in the sense that a management plan for recreational-type properties is different than, say, a timber property, or a hunting property, or that sort of thing. So, but the Forest Service, through the DNR program, they have a grant program that is, they call it the Outreach and Education Program. And their interest is in funding public agencies, cities, or counties, or schools, or other public agencies that own forested property and need some assistance with those properties for either educational purposes, or for recreational purposes, or those kind of things. So, that's where I came into this, was trying to, to accomplish those goals and figure out what's the best way to, to, well, first of all, describe the property. What do we have? What's the condition of the resource? What are the threats, as John mentioned? And what would be some recommendations going forward to continue to manage this to meet the city's objectives?
Yeah, kind of to piggyback on that, as Jim mentioned, the reason that we really wanted to get into this, you know, this is, this is quite a, an obligation, a task that we have in front of us to, to carry on with this amazing piece of property that we have in Prescott, to continue to heed Frederick Law Olmsted's charge that he's given us and to honor the good work that Peter White did to bring this to the city. So, to make sure that the, the resource is healthy and that we are following the best practices in order to keep it healthy for generations to come. That's why we kind of got into this. So, the assessment, throughout the winter, Jim went out and did an analysis of what we have out there. So, this is determining what's out on the island, what are the species that are out there? What are the stands? Through that, 12 different stands were identified. They're showed on the right there. And each stand is, is detailed in the plan as to what's the makeup, what's the health of it. And I'll let, I'll let Jim talk a little bit about his methods as he was out there on the island and the overall health of, of the forest at Prescott.
So, my, it's field sampling method. We use a, a systematic sample method where we, we run transects through the forest and, and stop periodically, measure trees, count the density, look at the density of the forest, look at the size and the species and the health of the trees that are there, make observations about what's on the ground. Just general survey of the, it's a quantitative survey. We collect a lot of numbers. But basically, that gives us a description of what is out there. And so, we're gonna, are we gonna, we're not going to go through stand by stand, no. So, the overall, kind of the gist of it was, the hardwood, northern hardwood areas in the middle of the forest are, for the most part, on their way to becoming an old forest or an old growth type of condition. They haven't been managed in a long time. And they have developed large diameter trees that are, are mature to over-mature. And that kind of forest becomes sort of a museum type of thing. It's not vigorous in terms of growth rate, but it's, it's unlike most of the forests that we have around here because most of the forests that we have are managed in a more aggressive way. And so, you don't see a lot of old growth type of development, except in special places like the McCormick Tractor, or the Sylvania Wilderness Tractor, some of those kind of places. So, uniquely here, we have, albeit a small area, there's not a lot of places that I know of where you, where the public has access to old growth conditions that are so accessible for, like this. Most, it's not all that easy to get to the McCormick Tractor. If you're going to go to the interior of the Sylvania area, you have to work at it. Here, people can just about drive through it. And, and it's, and it's local to the city of Marquette and to all the visitors that come here. So, it's kind of unique in that sense, even though it's not thousands of acres, it still has some pretty unique characteristics about it. So, that was kind of my general sense is, we have a, an older forest here. We do have some risks. I think we'll talk about that, especially in the, the pine areas. But, but it's, it's not, it's unlike, the thing that's unique about it is it's accessible to the public, it's close to the city, and it's, it's unlike most of the rest of the forest that we drive through elsewhere in the U.P.
So, the threats. So, this is really kind of what, one of the things we really wanted to get out of this plan. You know, we have this jewel. What are the things that could really wreak havoc on, on this park? The major threats are wind and fire. So, through Jim's surveys, there was some core sampling of a few trees out there. And what, what you find with old growth is that you do find some hollow trees. So, that lends itself to more, more opportunity for, for the Lake Superior winds to really kind of take some of those down. So, that is a, a natural threat that we have. The bigger, and big, actually, the biggest threat that we have out there is fire. And the diagram on the right is, is showing the threat levels as far as fire goes. The yellow and the green are really hardwoods and don't have a lot of fuels that could cause a, a large fire. But the red ring around that offers some opportunities. We've got a slide. We're going to talk a lot about the fire dangers out there toward the end of this presentation. Minor threats, invasive species. Most of this stuff is actually things that humans do. So, invasive species- So, invasive species might be one exception to that, where we might have some bugs, some things that would come in and be a threat to the actual forest. But those items really aren't the things that, that would cause havoc to the tree species that we have out there are not things that we've seen in the state of Michigan at this point. And then, the deer herd. Basically, the, the carrying capacity of the animals that we have out there is far exceeding what the carrying capacity of the island is. So, there's a lot more than what the island can naturally support. So, the only logical explanation, since everything's not browsed down to the ground out there, is that people are feeding these animals. And so, that is against a policy that we have existing, and you'll be seeing a policy in the future that would, would make that against the law. So, for all of those watching at home and listening, you can't feed the deer. It's a big deal. And then, physical damage to the, to the trees and the resources. So, this is where you get into mountain bikes going off of the paved path. That's not something that, that we allow. And people stringing up hammocks, which actually damages the, the tree itself, or slacklines. So, that's, that's a thing that is already against one of our ordinances, but we do see from time to time out there. So, please, don't do that if you're utilizing the resource. Also, other items that were on the minimal impact would be, we do have a lot of historical and cultural resources from the Kabagum's Grave site, or to many other things out there. And people actually going through and, and wanting to take pieces of, of the island home with them. That's, that's not something that we want to see, but that could adversely affect the park. And then, the sandstone Lakeshore Cliff, you can see right underneath where it says Threats to the Forest. That's all sandstone Lakeshore Cliff. And maybe, Jim, if you want to talk a little bit about that sandstone and its significance?
Part of the, one of the criteria for these plans that are written with the Forest Stewardship Grant Support, they require a review of, of sensitive cultural, or archaeological, or biological features. So, we ran a, we ran a screen against the database to look for threatened endangered species. Didn't find any. Ran a ski, a database query against the archaeological and historical database. There's a bunch of them. And then, we ran another one about, against this database that looks for sensitive sites. And so, Michigan Natural Features Inventory is the organization in the state of Michigan that keeps track of sensitive sites. They have on their list Sandstone Lakeshore Cliff, which is the kind of cliffs we see at the island. You see them over at Pictured Rocks, you see them on Grand Island, you see them over at the Apostle Islands. This feature is unique to Lake, to the south shore of Lake Superior. So, it, it doesn't exist anywhere else. So, we have it here, and we, anybody who goes there and looks at it loves it. It's beautiful, there's caves, it's really attractive. You get a high vantage point to look down at the lake. So, it's, everybody wants to get to the edge and look out on the lake. But it's a very sensitive ecological situation, because the soil is about that thick. And so, foot traffic almost immediately removes the soil. And so, you see in those sites, you'll see tree roots are exposed. And, and if it is, has much slope to it at all, then natural rainfall will erode, cause erosion. So, it's, it's a sensitive site, and it's on the radar of the, the Natural Features people. So, it needs to be considered as, how are we gonna manage that here on Presque Isle, which gets a lot of visitor traffic? And so, that, you know, that one jumped right out as one of the threats that, that we need to think about.
So, there's a lot more detail in the plan. But based on that, looking at what are the threats to the resource? What are the things that we have out there? Jim came forward with the recommendations. And so, the recommendations, there's five points from a, a management of the resource perspective. And a lot of this is accomplished through policy and education. So, minimize damage from recreation users. So, making sure that bikes are not off of the paved path, and that hammocks and slacklines are not used at the island. A policy to prohibit the collection or disturbance of cultural and historic resources. That's where metal detecting was, was mentioned. We do have a policy against that. So, you can't metal detect at the island or in any of the parks. But enforcement of that is, is something that we continually have to work on. Interpretive education about the unique features. So, a lot of this is really getting the message out as to why we have this, why we need to be careful of it, and how do we educate the people so that they can better use the park when they're out there without causing harm? Fire prevention policy, which I have a whole, one whole slide after this, and we're almost to the end. But that's probably the biggest impact. And that would be reducing the fuels that we have in certain areas, and then banning all fires except for charcoal, which we, we have a policy in the works that, that would do that. And then, finally, a designation of special sites. And that's to protect those cultural resources, and help to get the information out on it. Now, beyond the management of the resource, Jim also recommends that we join the American Tree Farm system. And that does a, a lot of really good things for us. It isn't exactly what it sounds like. It's not like you'd be farming the trees out there. But it's a program that would offer a lot of good things. And I'll let him speak briefly on what that would do for us.
So, the American Tree Farm system is a free-to-the-landowner program that gives, it, it, to participate in that system, you have to have a management plan. So, having this plan written meets that criteria. But then, becoming a member of American Tree Farm entitles the landowner to, every five years, a forester will come and visit, will review the plan, will review the resource. So, you're gonna get an ongoing update, ongoing review. It also will get you connected to other landowners who are in the system. There's, you'll, you'll get email, you'll get access to online resources that are helpful tips for how to manage your resource. Tree Farm also likes to use Tree Farm members' properties for educational programs to bring the public into a site and explain what's going on. And so, one of the, I think, one of the great opportunities at Presque Isle is there's a lot of educational potential there. And so, being part of the Tree Farm system would facilitate that. You could do it without the Tree Farm, but it certainly would give you access to a much broader audience, I think, other tree farmers.
So, this is the last slide that I have for you. And really, this is probably, as I mentioned, the biggest threat to the island as we know it. And that is the potential of a wildfire. This could, could happen in a number of different ways. This could be someone throwing a cigarette butt out of their car. This could be a lightning strike. This could be someone starting a campfire somewhere on the island. Those are all things that would be really detrimental and could cause a, a big problem. The threat, I say it's the biggest threat, it's not a huge threat. And Jim will talk a little bit about that when we get done. It's not like this is gonna happen for sure tomorrow. It's not imminent like some of the, the places that you might see in, in, in other parts of the U.P. or other parts of the country. But it is a possibility. So, in the absence of a natural wildfire, fuels build up. So, fire is a naturally occurring thing. So, a lightning strike, or a forest fire in a different area that moved through this, the plan kind of outlines how that may have been, how we got to the makeup of tree species that we have out there now in the 1800s, or earlier, actually, with a wildfire coming through and making room for the, the type of species that we have now. So, that's a natural part. And absent of that natural piece is when things like the balsam fir start to come in, some of the ladder fuels that help to build a fire from the ground up to the crown. And so, I'll let Jim talk a little bit about this. But the, the red area, kind of, if you, if you visualize it between the Pavilion and Sunset Point, is probably our biggest threat. There's a lot of balsam fir there, there's a lot of down pine trees that a fire could easily take and, and carry up a slope. The slope is a big deal as well. So, fire likes to go up. So, the recommendation is to remove some of the dead and down in that section, and potentially some of the balsam fir as well, as a natural fire would, would do anyway. So, Jim, if you want to talk a little bit about that?
You don't have that picture.
I don't.
Okay. So, if you, if you walk the trails that are the top of the ridge on the west side, in that red area, you, if you look off the trail into the woods, there's a lot of small balsam that ranges from small balsam fir trees. These are, these are evergreen trees, and they, they may range from like three or four feet up to about 15 or 20 feet. And they, the, this is a natural process that happens when fire, when periodic fire is excluded. And so, there's no periodic light fire history, because we, we don't let them burn. And so, you get this fuel buildup. And so, when it, when that fuel buildup creates the potential for a much larger fire, the, the western part of the U.S. has had a lot of experience with this. So, we have a smaller-scale, similar threat here. And my recommendation would be, if there, if it would be possible, to remove some of that small balsam fir that is close to the ground, to open up. It would improve the aesthetics, it would look better, you'd be able to see through the understory. But it also would remove that threat of if a fire got started, it would stay on the ground, and it wouldn't have those, those small trees that would carry the fire pretty quickly up into the canopy. So, a fire on the ground is a lot easier to control than a fire that's raging through the top of the, top of the forest. So, that's, that's the idea behind that. It's not an easy thing. And, and John mentioned that the risk, it's impossible to, to put a number on the risk. What's the potential for a fire out there? I'm surprised there hasn't been one yet. But there hasn't. And so, the fact is, there hasn't been a fire there in a long time. Maybe we won't have a fire for another long time. But if a fire starts, the potential for it becoming fairly damaging is really there because of these small ladder fuels.
The picture, if you have the plan in front of you, is page 17, that has a picture of some of that ladder fuel. But in addition to, to that, as far as some physical things that would help to alleviate that risk, the fire management plan also suggests that the Marquette Fire Department and the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Fire Management Department get together on a fire management strategy. So, part of that policy would be, what do we do if it happens? And they have plans, and I think they could handle it pretty, pretty well. But having a, a group of people sit down and actually put that, put ink to paper on that would be, would make the response a lot better. And aside from that, again, the, the largest threat outside of lightning is really humans. So, it's our impact as we're out there. So, education comes into it. And the big piece of that would be our staff getting together with NMU to let them know, the incoming freshmen know, that you can't camp on the island, there's no fires allowed anywhere on the island. And then, working that information into the park kiosk that we've talked about. Getting out to the local media and, you know, getting the message out that way, and through Travel Marquette to those people coming and visiting. So, education campaign. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I'll open it up to questions.
Commissioners, Mr. Fraser.
How's your forest plan work with all the downed trees on the island? I've heard from a lot of people, a lot of the downed trees are blocking, you know, our little trails and stuff like that. Is that something the city's gonna look at, when they're looking at the trees, or?
The actual, in, in the hardwood areas, the downed trees are actually part of the old-growth character of the forest. So, that there's a lot of large diameter downwood. That's part of what makes an old-growth forest an old-growth forest. That creates habitat that is not available in a lot of more intensively managed forests. Of course, you have trails, and you need to keep those open. There's no harm in cutting that down material and, and clearing it off of, off of trails. But the, in the pine areas, the, there is some of that smaller diameter balsam that has died, and that is a, that is a ready fuel. So, that's a problem. But in the hardwood areas, downwood, and there's a, there's not just, there's big sections laying on the ground. There's standing dead that have broken off, that are maybe 15, 20 feet tall, and they're 25, 30 inches in diameter. That's normal, and that's, that's, again, one of the attributes of an old-growth forest.
I agree with you on the sandstones, because sandstones are very fragile. And it's, the islands are roading very hard after these, you know, last little couple storms. And also, John, just, you know, I was going around the island by boat that day. I've gone on by car, of course, there's people using picnic tables, they're using the little grills, you know, I don't know if toast, only grill in certain areas, but they have, just, that's a possibility for fire. Something they were putting on the website, or just let people know, you shouldn't do that. And the thing is, I saw when I was going around by boat, was somebody was actually rappelling down one of the cliffs on the, I don't know if it was the East, the park. So, I don't know if, but, I mean, Bill Thompson's the expert in rock climbing, but I think he's, he's really a picture of rocks. I didn't think he was doing it at the island, but I saw people rappelling down right towards the, about the biggest spot of the island, just one of the flat spots, so that, that could possibly hurt some of the erosion, you know? They're probably just have a, you know, under a tree or something like that, I don't know how they do it, but saw somebody rappelling down one area, so just something to keep an eye on.
Commissioner Hill.
Two questions. One is the erosion on the, I guess, sort of northwest side that seems to, you know, the, the big storms that we're having seem to just be eating away at the island. Was any of, and, and this sounds like this was much more about the trees. Is there, what's the connection to that, or in the management plan maybe of the park overall? How, how's that all fit together?
Yeah, it's a little separate from, from the, the Forest Management Plan. Really, the, the erosion, we have had an erosion study, and that actually led to the armament that you see just north of the Pavilion. And that spot was identified as the highest-risk spot. So, most amount erosion, and also direct imminent threat to the road. So, we're kind of taking a hands-off approach to that. But we're in a monitoring state. So, right now, we, we monitor the erosion twice a year on some key spots. And as, as it progresses, we look for any threats to the, to the access. And so, short of armoring the entire island, which I don't think anybody wants to see, and nobody has the money for, the, the spot that was most problematic has been taken care of, so.
Okay, thank you. And actually, one other related, like that study, the erosion study and this study, where will they be found on the city website going forward?
Yeah, I think this one will be located on the Parks and Rec page, under Presque Isle. And it'll also be located probably, I'll talk with the manager's office, but I think there's a spot for all plans in the beginning that we can put it. So, it'll be twofold.
And the erosion study, is it?
That is not on the website right now. We could potentially put it out there, it's more of a resource for us. It's not really something the layperson is going to even want to look at.
Okay. It's been mentioned before, and as a new person, I just, if there was a way to put all this stuff in one place, but...
Yeah, if someone wanted to see it, they could stop in my office.
Okay. And, and by the way, this is really exciting. Like, I'm so glad that you, that we've gotten to this point. This is tremendous amount of work. It's, I know it's been a long time coming, and so, I'm really thrilled that this is, we're getting to hear this tonight. And my last question is, then, thinking about going forward with these recommendations, what would be the process for getting the budget to... for getting the budget to implement this?
Well, I think that, um, you know, a lot of what is there, um, is really policy and education and enforcement. So, uh, a lot of it doesn't require big changes in what we're doing. When it comes to physically doing some things like some of the fuel management, we do have some partners, um, in town through Superior Watershed Partnership and others, um, that have expressed interest in assisting in that manner. Um, we have been in conversations with Moosewood Nature Center on doing, um, a deer census this year to determine the exact number. Um, so we have a lot of partners in the community that can assist in, in some ways and any of these things that would require, uh, budget will bring forward, um, in the 2021 budget.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Jim. Nice presentation and an excellent plan. I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do with it, especially on the education front. I think that's a big piece. I was just hoping, John, you might be able to give us an update. I know we had a work session recently on the, we've been more focusing on Presque Isle quite a bit lately. Um, on the use policy for Presque Isle. I know that was still being worked on and how that ties together with this. I know it was mentioned a little bit, but.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Really a lot of the stuff that we talked about, um, it's good timing really. Um, so a lot of the recommendations in this plan are for some policy changes and most of those, well, all of them really are either existing right now, um, or included in, uh, the use policy that you've seen. So we'll be, um, fine tuning that and bringing that to you at the next commission meeting is my intent unless, uh, the city manager says otherwise. So.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Thanks, guys. A great presentation. Um, was there, has there ever been, uh, a management study done on the island?
There was a plan in the early nineties, I believe. Uh, and then I, it's also significant Johnny Anderton's, uh, short book on the, uh, I forget the title of it. It's referenced in here. It, yeah, it's, it's out of print, but he, he wrote a nice little booklet on the geology and the cultural history of the island. And so I referenced that, but there was a, there was an earlier plan that was at least approved by the Pi pack, I believe. Yep. And then going all the way back to Olmstead's, you know, letter from the late eighteen hundreds.
And I, I totally appreciate the, the stewardship, you know, taking care of this piece of property. We all know how important it is. And I was a little bit nervous thinking about some of the, you know, taking out some of the balsams, the, you know, everybody gets very sensitive with that and rightfully so. So I guess, you know, obviously you guys are, are the professionals in this. You're gonna do what's right by, uh, the number of trees and how much and, you know, the certain areas that you're gonna be taking them out. And I was a little bit nervous about that until you brought up your last statements about working with these other entities, whether it's with the Lex Superior Watershed or with Moosewood and, uh, these, these people that are very closely connected with the, uh, the environment out there and have always been, uh, um, champions in taking care of the island. So that, that makes me really, uh, I think that's just a great idea. So please, uh, make sure that that does incorporate those, those other, uh, people that care as much as we do. So, thank you.
Other commissioners. Commissioner Campana.
Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation tonight. Uh, something we've been needing and, uh, will be good for the island. Just a question, um, so are you gonna be doing a so, more of a select cut here, a more aggressive type of select cut that you perhaps haven't been doing in the past? I mean, are you gonna go in there and, uh, you know, cutting down trees can actually make the forest better. So.
Yeah, I'll let, uh, Jim talk about the, his recommendation and, and the, sort of the numbers along that, that section. It's really, uh, a lot of down wood. Um, and then there's, um, there's, there's quite a few balsam trees that, that could present a problem. Those balsam firs, if you're, if you're ever camping and you, you stick a little chunk of wood into the, the sap, uh, pocket and then take a lighter, goes up just like gasoline. It's pretty impressive, but.
Jim?
So I, I wouldn't characterize it as a select cut in the way that term is traditionally used where you, you mark individual mature trees for removal. This would be more like an understory cleaning. So we're gonna be taking out trees that are this big or, and they may be, they may be standing dead, but they may be live. But there will be, it'll be like an understory brush removal type of thing, not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna mark mature trees for removal.
Uh, that, that just reminded me, um, balsam fir makes wonderful wreaths, uh, for Christmas. I, um, maybe there's a way to partner with another organization that might be able to take the ones that aren't dead and, and make them into, um, Presque Isle Christmas wreaths. I could imagine those going for a pretty penny, um, potentially. That would be a great, uh, little fundraising activity for somebody. So, just an idea. Thanks.
Let me just, uh, let me just clean up then. Last time I was on Mackinac Island, I was surprised by the number of fire plugs I saw in the woods everywhere. And clearly, I mean, maybe every fifty yards, seventy-five yards, there's a fire hydrant. So clearly they're prepared for a fire and clearly they understand the value of the island to them and the need to be able to fight the fire. What I, what keeps me up at night is Presque Isle because we have none of that. And, uh, I mean, I, I think good intentions notwithstanding, that can go up tomorrow and it's gone. And I don't know anybody that would really be capable of going out there and fighting it in any quick, effective manner. I mean, you can deal with it small and we can hope for the best, but, I mean, Isle Royale, in the thirties, half the island burned. Next year went back, burned the other half. And that was all lightning strike. So we have been dodging a bullet for a very long time. And I think the, the efforts of this report will be critical in allowing us to keep the island going for the future. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your attention and thank you very much for what you do. Thank you.
If I, if I could speak, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. My, my air I have not finished yet. I've dismissed, I, all I've done is dismissed the presentation. We now have time for public comment. I know, Ms. Brum, you suggested you'd like to be on a public comment. Your time is now.
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic. Excellent work. First thing I wanted to say is this is long, long overdue. Any forest that encounters people as much as the island forest is encountered by people, these things need to be paid attention to by professionals who look at forests, um, and compare them with all the other forests. So excellent work. And I support completely joining that tree society so that like-minded professionals can learn from each other. I'm also very grateful for the mayor for bringing up the lack of fire hydrants on the island because that was one of the points I was gonna make. I mean, I guess we all have visions of people dropping hoses in the lake and then shoving water, but that's not gonna work if it's in the center of the island. And I don't know of any firefighting helicopters. So that's a, a number one issue. But what I really wanted to say here, and I wanted to say it without sentiment or without, um, uh, warm fuzzies, we're responsible for the fact that there's too many deer at the island. We, uh, we feed them. I don't personally feed them, but other people do feed them. And when I read in the write-up for the agenda tonight that, uh, a species management plan for the deer herd was being planned, uh, a species management plan traditionally in this city means, uh, guys and gals with guns going out and, uh, slaughtering tame animals who through no fault of their own have become a problem. And so I want to challenge the city and the forestry and the, the city services to come up with something better than that. If there's too many deer on the island, that's our fault. But there's other places that need deer. I don't, I'm not being stupid when I say that. I would really hope that we could come up with something better than the traditional fall slaughter of tamed animals. I don't think it reflects well in us as people and I don't think it reflects well in us as a place we want to live. It's our fault. They're tame. It's our fault. There's too many of them. Can we please relocate them? And this would be a lovely project for a lot of the, the people you work with who know about places where for a lot of reasons, there's not healthy deer. And they want to reestablish a healthy deer herd because, uh, I think we will have failed as a community if the only solution we can come up with is too many deer on the island is to shoot them. Uh, I know that's traditionally the way it's done and I'm just wanting to challenge people to come up with a better way. And again, excellent work, long overdue. Uh, when I was at Michigan Tech and you were an engineer, you were called a toot. And if you were a forester, you were called a twig. You are a very excellent twig, sir. Thank you very much.
Ms. Luttenberger.
Uh, Matt Luttenberger, fourteen oh six, Garfield Ave. Again, thank you folks for doing what you do. Um, I, uh, I initially wanted to come up here to tell you that this, this was something I'm surprised the city doesn't do. Uh, and I say that because when I, when I moved back for my third time, you guys can relax. I'm not gonna ask you any questions. But, uh, when I moved back for the third time, uh, one of the first guys I met was a, a maintenance man for the city. So he showed me his favorite route and that was going through Presque Isle and all the different routes that you can do going through Presque Isle. Uh, so to find out that we haven't done anything since he introduced me to that, basically he told me the year later, he doesn't do that because the city doesn't do it. Um, or at least they weren't hiring him to do it as a seasonal worker anymore. So my thought was, um, I, I would love to hear a way for our Parks and Recreation Department and maintenance, uh, teams to implement some of these, uh, recommendations. As far as the deer management and, and wildlife management goes, I've heard rumors of a bear. Um, I've seen evidence of moose when it's been really, really cloudy and, and foggy out. These are things that, that we put on our travel brochures that we highlight. This is what we can do. So if, if deer management means bring back a farm or bring back a, a zoo so that that's a spot we can actually feed the animals again, please do it. We got rid of the zoo so we could put in a pavilion. And now we've got a problem with this, with the zoo animals running free. Um, so in that sense, like, there's gonna be a lot of discussions. You guys, I, I, I don't know. I don't really know what you're approving tonight, other than to go forward with the possibility of using some of these recommendations. Which honestly, anybody's gonna give you a recommendation, don't refuse it. That, that just seems common sense. So I also want to talk about one last, uh, personal experience would be for the treasure hunting or, um, what's called mineral, whatever. Is that, does that mean I can't take agate out of the, uh, the rock wall and the break wall? Does that mean, uh, where the sandstone comes in, I can't skip stones because I'm taking them off the high, off the, uh, which called cultural, historical preservation place and I'm putting them back in the water? At the same time, if you're worried about stones, it's, well, okay, if you're worried about stones, please move the parking lots around Sunset Point. That seems to be a very difficult spot for people to navigate along the roots, along the, the, uh, trees. You're also talking about restricting hammock use, but you're also talking about cutting down a whole lot of trees. I mean, you're raking the forest. So which is it? Can we put in posts where we can actually sit on a hammock? Or could we use one of these balsam firs that are pretty tall? My time is up, but please, this seems like we need to do a lot more and as a committee base, a lot more.
Mr. Verado.
Frank Javertow, these are my opinions. The supplement quotes Fred Olmstead advising us to quote, preserve it, treasure it, as little altered as may be for all time. Of initial concern was our hiring of a forester for a plan that calls for no alteration of the hardwoods except for fall hazards loom over well-traveled trails. Good presentation though. Also, there was no such thing as an over mature tree. A term which foresters use as an excuse to log, even though this document states that little alteration is planned. Dead and dying trees in a forest are a beautiful sight, all part of nature's prescription to, to return coarse woody debris to the soil. Removing dead timber after the nineteen eighty-nine storm was mentioned. The Olmstead philosophy was thrown out the window to the point that needless destruction was still evident even when this report was drafted. Not from the storm, but from the carelessness of the extraction. The parks director allegedly logged on wet terrain, leaving ruts behind. Removing brushy pine matter poses a tough question. Can it be done without impacting the terrain or leaving ugly cut marks or stumps behind? Forest plans typically include design criteria that addresses these items. Forest management plans typically include a no-action alternative, although those are rarely implemented. Let us ensure as the supplement, as the supplement suggests, that this rare treasure is worthy of the no-action designation. A healthy forest canopy helps minimize non-native invasion of species intrusion. Let us focus on safety, erosion, dark sky opportunities, minimal signage, and the walking versus driving hours. Our forest management plan ought to read, the Presque Isle forest is worthy of managing itself except for dangerous branches and leaning trees that are within falling range of major trails or the oval drive. Preserve it, treasure it, as little altered as may be for all time.
Thank you. Commissioners, uh, what is your pleasure? Mayor Protem.
I move that we adopt the forest management plan as presented.
Is there a second? Uh, Commissioner Campana, please.
I second that.
Any further comments?
Well, I just, I wanted to, I didn't make any comments earlier because my questions were answered by the time the line came around. And I just wanted to thank staff for the hard work and everybody for the hard work on this project. I think Presque Isle is important to each and every one of us and I'm glad that we're doing something about it. Um, I, I think Commissioner Hill kind of hinted at this question, so I guess I do have one, um, John. And we're talking about the education, um, component of this. How long are we, when are we thinking if this passes this evening, when are we looking at enacting that?
Well, I would say, um, typically we go and talk to the students. At N M U. in the fall and I think we're slated to be over there with their Fall Fest. Um, this year we talk about a, a, um, plethora of different items that are useful for, uh, our transient populations. And so I think, you know, a lot of those, those pieces, um, happen already, but we're just adding to it as we, um, get these recommendations. Tonight's an opportunity to educate the public as well. Um, I think we did quite a bit of that through the presentation. And we'll take those opportunities any chance that we, we get. Um, but ongoing, uh, opportunities to reach out to the media are things that, that we're programming in as we go.
Thank you.
Anything further? Commissioner Campana?
No further comment.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Schlegel?
No.
No, sorry. All those commissioners in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to item number seven, which is a purchase request for city-owned property parcel two A of Founder's Landing. Clerk, if you will, please read the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. The city entered into an agreement for purchase and sale of real estate on October ninth, two thousand and eighteen for the purchase of approximately four point six acres of city-owned property located at the northwest corner of Lake Shore Boulevard and U S forty-one, commonly known as parcel two of Founder's Landing. The agreement was entered into with Founder's Landing Joint Venture LLC comprised of Home Renewal Systems, Founder's Landing LLC, H R S, and Market Opportunity LLC Hotel Group. In June, the city was, was asked by Market Opportunity LLC to execute an assignment of interest to amend the agreement and allow them to close on parcels two B and two C, the hotel group's portion of the property. Meanwhile, H R S completed their due diligence period for parcel two A. On July eighth, Founder's Landing Joint Venture rescinded and terminated the existing agreement in order to extend the closing date for parcel two A. An updated agreement for purchase and sale of real estate has been developed and approved by both legal teams and is attached for commission approval. It has been structured as a new purchase agreement with essentially the same terms, removing the due diligence and title objection paragraphs as the, these objectives have been fulfilled. With this agreement, H R S will have one hundred and eighty days after the execution of this document to close. Their twenty-five thousand dollar earnest money deposit remains in escrow with the title company. Fiscal effect, the city previously received six hundred and sixty-six million, six hundred, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-six cents in proceeds from the sale of parcels two B and two C and will receive additional sale proceeds of four hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-four cents upon completion of this sale. Recommendation, approve the attached agreement for purchase and sale of real estate and authorize the execution of the document. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
My speaker notes are a little bit confusing here. I believe Ms. Luttenberger wanted to talk. Please do. Please do.
Thank you. Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the City of Marquette. First and foremost, this is a great deal for the city. I mean, out of all the frustrations that I've ever had and all the dealings with discussions, basically, you're making a bunch of money. And I'm going to bring this up a little later on, but right now, let's just leave it at, this is a good way for city development to proceed. If a section is too big for one developer, or if there's conflict between the one developer and any partners they may have, this is a great way to move forward to facilitate the city receiving everything they need with the different fences and posts all set up. So on that note, this doesn't seem like a bad thing, but this is one of the last parcels of Founder's Landing, and we have still yet to see an actual, like, drawing of what's supposed to be there, or a representation of what, quote, "Founder's Landing" was going to be. Because when we started this with Mayor Tourville, it was all set up as, we're going to do something. Well, that something has changed a few times, and we've got now six, or four, partners in this last parcel, parcel two. So there are four partners there, there are another four, or two or three partners for the other parcels of, quote, "Founder's Landing." Frankly, I'm waiting for Founder's Landing, the one on the pier, to be finished. It looks like it's unfinished cement or bricks, and then some sort of metal on the top, but from far away, it looks like you've got a half building. Nonetheless, parcel two A, we don't know what's going in there. You're selling a piece of property right now without a visual representation, without a map of something, without anything laying around saying, oh, this is what we expect to be there. I mean, this is what the builder expects to be there. So this is my comment about just communication. You're the city. When you say to us that we don't know what we're talking about before we come up here to speak in front of you for three minutes, it's because of things like this, where honestly, what is parcel two A? Is that the one that's closest to the river? Is that the one that's closest to the road? Sure, it's in the drawings, sure, it's in the PDF, if you download all the pieces, but where's the map? Here? Where is something? And I'm sorry, I'm getting frustrated because I paid my bills today, and honestly, where do you walk in to go and pay your bills? Where do you walk in to then go and talk to the city manager? There's no map, there's no directory, there's no, like, visual representation of where things are in this building. And that's carried over to things like this, where we don't actually ask for one from somebody who's giving us $400,000. That seems like something that you're negligible about, and we should do more. If it's about communication, if your elected official is about communication, show us. Show us some maps.
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. Again, no depiction appears in the supplement for this item, making it, again, impossible to comment. Other concerned residents gave up. It feels as if the manager is playing a game by repeatedly failing to provide renderings of the townhouses and hotel that several residents requested. This is the third time now, and the man responsible isn't even paying attention. Don't tell us the manager couldn't have obtained the renderings that we briefly saw October 9th and have them copied for tonight's packet. This board actually encourages him to purposely withhold these vital drawings by not instructing him to provide them. Maybe he missed our request because he was gabbing with his neighbor. His ill performance has put Mr. Stonehouse in a bad place, after he'd assured us there'd be plenty of time to comment, but to date, nothing has appeared in any of four packets to prepare a comment on. Of course, we realize that depictions don't really matter, because the cronies are allowed to do as they please within the ordinances. But it's evident when we look around that the ordinances don't adequately take view sheds and slopes into considerations. Nothing's done because the perverted developers have free rein over this place.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Okay. I make a motion to approve the attached agreement for purchase and sale of real estate and authorize the city, to authorize the, excuse me, execution of the document.
Second for that?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Commissioner Frazier, anything further?
Trying to get the Founder's Landing built up and more money for the city, because we're losing a lot of money with, we are just getting closed down, and city's trying to gain more to help from increasing bills.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Holy wha, that was a lot of, like, angry talking from two citizens at once. I think we've talked about this a lot of times before, but this is not the part where any of us really know exactly what this is going to look like at this point. We're selling this property, and then from there, we get pictures, and we get to see what it looks like, and it goes through the Planning Commission, it goes through Site Plan Review, and all of those things. I know that this is a good thing for the city. We had this in our plan for a long time, to sell Founder's Landing, and this additional piece needs to be sold off, so this can be a completed project. And so with that, I don't see any other reason not to vote yes.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Campana?
I would totally agree with the Mayor Pro Tem. This is property we've been trying to sell for as long as we've had it. You know, it's the old railroad yards, and it was an ugly, non-productive piece of property. Now we're finally going to get a good development there that can provide tax revenue for the city. And we have seen renderings of what potentially could be there, and as the Pro Tem says, this is only starting the process. We will see pictures, we will see ideas, and we will vote on it at a later date, but it's not going to happen tomorrow. This is a long process yet.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Your Honor. Maybe staff can validate this for me. If I'm not mistaken, with the sale of this property and the completion of the rest of what's currently being done down at Founder's, plus these other two parcels that are being, this other parcel that's being sold, at the completion, that would allow us to start the process for the brownfield recollection, or collection of taxes, correct?
That's correct.
So that's a pretty big deal, so we can't start any of that reclaiming until this is done. So I think it's pretty exciting to say that we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Frazier?
One more thing to add. If you have a piece of, if you have a house for sale, or you have a piece of property, how often do you ask the person what they want? You ask them what they want to do with it, they give you an idea, but do you have a say in saying, okay, this is what I want it to look like, this is what it should look like? You just take your payment and go off, because nobody ever tells you what it's going to do. But again, we will say, we sell the property, and then they go through all the steps, the city's got regulations, how to do everything, the Planning Commission, like Paul Schlegel said, everything will be done the right way. It's just selling the property, and then things will go forward from there.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those commissioners in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any commissioners opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to item eight, which is Resolution of Intent to Sell Municipal Property, and that'll be the Cliff's Dull property, and that will require a roll call vote. However, before we do so, we do have a presentation by our Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and city commissioners. I'm going to give a very brief, I can rip on John a little bit now, because he's gone, I was a little long in the tooth there, so I'm going to try and shorten it up for everybody. I'm going to give a very brief history here of the whole entire process, and it's kind of important that Commissioner Campana had just said, you know, speaking of pieces of property that we've had on the radar for a long time to be able to sell, this is definitely another one of them. What's really important to understand in the process in dealing with the Cliff's Dull site is this is not a new item. We have, the City of Marquette has had this in their strategic plan. The most recent two strategic plans, which are two-year plans that we as staff use as policy direction from the City Commission to implement, have specifically directed staff to work on the Cliff's Dull site, and work with Eagle, which is former DEQ, and also seek qualified developers for economic development on the property. The City of Marquette acquired the property in 1997 for a dollar. I have the ceremony dollar on my office wall. The intent was for future economic development, and at that time, the city was looking at doing an Iron Bay Business Park that never really came to fruition, so we took the next step. There were two parcels that were sold. If you recognize the Community Biolife Plasma Center was originally city-owned property that was sold off, that was returned into economic development. There's a parcel to the south of that that is owned by a resident, and also the NMU, like, football practice area and stuff in the vicinity of the dome was also former Cliff's Dull site property. And of course, we used part of that for our Wright Street extension. And the city has been under order of Eagle, which is formerly called the MDEQ, since 2009, to address residual groundwater exceedances that are venting into Lake Superior. In layman's terms, there are byproducts from the formal charcoal kiln processing on the site that are approximately anywhere from 40 to 60 feet underneath in the groundwater that are making their way out to Lake Superior. And depending on the time of year, sometimes they are within legal limits, sometimes they are exceedances of the legal limits of those certain, they're basically dimethylphenols that go out there, but that could be a whole nother discussion. Anyhow, we have annually held work sessions with the City Commission on the Cliff's Dull site. Those are open to the public as well. We've had some people attend those, where we speak and we give progress updates on how our work is going with the MDEQ, and what the next steps will be. Most recently, we had applied for a mixing zone determination, I believe, back in 2018, and the state had sent that back to us, advising us to take another avenue forward with that, and we've been subsequently working on that recently. Lake Shore Boulevard gets tied into this, but there are a ton of community plans and documents out there that speak towards Lake Shore Boulevard and the Cliff's Dull site. The Community Master Plan, as far back as 1999, with the Lake Shore Development Task Force, and more recently, climate adaptation plans, including the Marquette County Community Resiliency Group, have all put a focus on the Cliff's Dull site and tying it into Lake Shore Boulevard for protecting the environment and Lake Superior, and also matching some funding on top of that. And it's important to note, this really is just a snippet, a snapshot, of the plans that we have that address the Dull site. Most recently, we had a work session, the City Commission did, where they talked about, again, Lake Shore Boulevard, the grant funding that the city has achieved, and a specific portion of that was tied into the former Cliff's Dull site opportunities, and the requesting of proposals, and some of the funding opportunities that would be available for public infrastructure. And the tie-in to the public infrastructure is also if there is any necessary environmental remediation, which there may be, required by Eagle. It can be done at the same exact time that we're moving the road, which in turn ties into the brownfield, and it also gives you economy and construction, because you are already on-site doing activity. Getting back to the execution of those strategic plans, more specifically the last one, which was 2018 to 2020, the city manager and I had drafted requests for qualifications that we issued in 2018. We had sent those out, and at the same time, we were receiving proposals, the City Commission formed a committee to review those proposals. It was a three-member body, and draft a recommendation, recommendation of the City Commission as a whole. These pretty pictures up here are actually from the request for qualifications document that went out, and they reflect everything in the strategic plan. The city did receive two proposals. Both of the proposals were from local development groups. One was from S&amp;P Enterprises, the other one was from Veridia Group. These are just snapshots of the development proposals that speak to the interest on it, and all of this information is available on the website with the agenda packet in a whole. The committee, of which I was a staff liaison to assisting those city commissioners, did an evaluation of each one of the proposals, and these documents up here that I've placed on here will give you an idea of what was looked at. Community master plan, various other master plans, demographics and housing trends, there's such a thing called a target market analysis, where we have, through QPAD and other planning agencies, there's been developed ideas of target markets for housing. I know that Jeff had used that for his decision to invest some money in the City of Marquette. More importantly, though, in the master plan, we looked at the future land use recommendations, which are mixed use for that parcel, and also the environmental status of the property and where the city is at in working with Eagle. And pretty significant to note also, this is a federally designated opportunity zone. The Cliff's Dull site is just north of that area, which opens up a lot of incentives to assist with that. And we also looked at the eligibility, or the commission, or the committee looked at the eligibility of the site for brownfield. It is significant to note also that during the evaluation, I advised Eagle that the, as a liaison, that the city was looking at doing this, and Eagle has seen this presentation and a lot of what we're doing, and they are very supportive of the efforts of the City Commission. But this here just talks about the evaluation. The committee met once, reviewed the proposals, wanted to move forward with interviewing Veridia Group. The committee met on the 25th and interviewed them, and then we had met one more time to discuss the results of that. The committee recommendation, and you know what? We're often hesitant to throw these drawings up here. It's important to note that these are conceptual, because it's pretty common knowledge by now that there was something near a dumpster fire on social media today based upon a set of drawings. And it's really important to note that these drawings were submitted as part of the packet from the potential developer, showing the maximum build-out of the site of what it could potentially be. Not even close to that step at this point right now. This is a recommendation from the committee that says, after reviewing the proposals, they recommend that the City Commission of a whole adopt a resolution of intent to sell to begin working with Veridia Group on potential concepts for the Cliff's Dull site. The next steps that would go on, and this is important for the commission and the public as a whole, if the City Commission were to adopt the resolution of intent to sell, that authorizes the city manager to begin negotiating terms of sale, local development agreement, what could occur with that, make sure that there's consistency with those various city plans and codes. That would give myself time to work with Eagle to meet our city obligations, and also permit development on the site that would protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents on there, as well as the community. Eagle's not in the business of putting people in harm's way, nor is the City of Marquette. And that would also give us time to work on any post-own And that would also give us time to work on any post-ownership obligation planning. What I mean by that is if the city does choose to sell the property, the city is still the liable party on the property, and we will have obligations after the sale to continue monitoring and monitoring the results of whatever remediation would need to be done, which is basically just dealing with groundwater. There's no real direct contact issues out there as of yet that have been identified. This would allow for continuing discussions with the Marquette Brownfield Authority. This has been looked at by staff as a great opportunity for funding to address the planned public improvements, which would be the relocation of the road and the park space that's being created on the east side. And also mention timing of any potential Eagle obligations. If the former MDEQ were to tell us that we would have to pursue some type of passive remediation, say we had to put a bentonite or a clay wall underneath the road, prevent contamination from coming to the lake, it's a very good time to do it when you're constructing the road because that's an economy of construction where they would save some dollars on that. After all of that stuff would be said and done, then the city manager would bring forward a package back to the city commission to consider the final sale of the property, which would include all of that. How many units is it going to be? What's going to be the potential tax income as far as the price ranges and so on and so forth along with that? So I promise to keep it short. I'm long-winded, I'm done. Any questions for myself, or we have members of the committee here? Perhaps the mayor would like to identify them? I'm keeping them pseudo at this time, right?
Mr. Stack, just hold right there for a second. I want to backtrack and make sure we've got the actual recommendation document read too, so everybody again has a full scope of what we're talking about. Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the city released a request for developer qualifications, RFQ, in two thousand and eighteen to seek qualified developers interested in purchasing the former Cliff's Dows site, parcel oh five one oh nine nine oh, two thousand and one, North Lake Shore Boulevard attached. The city received two responses to the RFQs from S&amp;P Enterprises and Veridia Group attached. The city commission formed a committee to review the responses and draft a recommendation to the city as a whole. A copy of the report and recommendation is attached. Fiscal effect, none by this action, however, upon successful closing of sale, the city will realize eighty percent or more of the appraised value of the property per the city code. Recommendation, adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell the subject property to Veridia Group. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. There were some members of the public that wanted to comment, and I'd like to take that period right now. You've had an opportunity to hear the expert, you've had an opportunity to hear the background, you've had an opportunity to hear what the document is. So before the commission weighs in, now's an opportunity to hear what your thoughts and comments may be. I'm going to be a little bit out of order with this. Ms. Brum, if you would please lead us.
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic Street. This is probably the most important thing I've said in front of this commission since I started speaking. So I want to choose my words carefully. If you proceed with doing tonight what I expect you're going to do, which is vote to proceed with this, my prediction, as a human being, as a chemical engineer and as a lawyer, in ten years' time, the people sitting in your chairs will be dealing with the third or fourth lawsuit brought against the city for the consequences of encouraging a residential development on the site of a long-term chemical manufacturing facility. I'm not a wild-eyed environmentalist, just spouting words to stop something that I don't feel right about. I am a professional chemical engineer degreed from Michigan Tech. I worked for the Dow Chemical Company. One of the biggest concerns I have about this plan is you, the city, and all the remediation efforts are designed to tackle what you know is there, that phenol to comment. By the way, phenol is one of the most toxic chemicals. They don't even let you use it in the Michigan Tech lab. So when he casually said there were phenol going into the water, that should have bothered you. Number two. Chemical manufacturing is done now under strict regulations. Cliff's Dow was done at a time when the city of Marquette was discharging raw sewage into Lake Superior as a matter of course. There were no environmental protection, no environmental concerns. When I was at Dow Chemical as a young engineer in my twenties, I told people I was from Marquette. I was taken aside by three different people on three different occasions and warned not to go onto that property. And I said, "Well, nobody goes onto Cliff's Dow, it's been shut down." They said, "Good, because we used to take stuff up there, midnight dump it. Nobody knows it's there, but it's the worst of the worst of what we couldn't dump in Midland." So I'm not as concerned about the stuff you know about. I'm very concerned about the stuff you don't know about. And the remediation brought about when it was taken off the superfund list back in two thousand was just to take it off the superfund list. There's no possible way you can clean up that site unless, as they say, you go down forty to sixty feet, and nobody's going to do that. So the first thing that's going to happen is when they dig up the land, they're going to find worse than they expected. They're going to pause, and then they're going to keep dilling. You're going to get the first people in there, you're going to have the first reactions, you're going to have the first lawsuits unless you insist that everybody who lives there signs a paper saying, "I know I'm living on the site of a former chemical manufacturing company." And that's what we're heading for if you go ahead with this tonight. I'm not speaking in hyperbole, I'm speaking as a professional. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Luttenberg.
Matt Luttenberger, fourteen oh six Garfield Ave., here in the city of Marquette. So when I came up here back in May and suggested a third possibility that the city or I present a water park to you, I was understanding that there was going to be a committee meeting and that after that committee meeting, there would be another discussion here in public. So I was prepared today, honestly, to give you this speech without knowing about the agenda. So here's my speech. I want to put a water park in town. I want the city to help me out. I would love to be able to use Cliff's Dow, because of everything that Ms. Brum just mentioned, to use it as a place to play. And I want to say this with all due reverence to Ben Harper. What good is a city with no place to play? I mean, if there's nowhere you can go as a park and walk the beach or hang out and go in the water during the middle of the wintertime. Honestly, I've been drawing up designs, wondering how far between the foam padding and the actual thirty-two-hundred-thousand-dollar or thirty-two-hundred-horsepower diesel engine I'm going to need. That's the kind of work, the due diligence, I've been making. And if they don't matter, if all I needed was to come up here and say, "Here's one point two million dollars," I would have done that in June. And I mean that in a heartbeat. I would have done this in June and offered you money right off the bat to say, "I want to work with the city in the future to design these twenty acres." By the way, the RFP is wrong. The RFP does not actually state the new road discussion. So we don't know how much actual land you're going to sell, which is evident because you don't have a sale price. You don't actually have, you have contingencies. So what you're doing right now is making a bill, a promissory note, to one of your favorite developers. That's how it feels from us on this side of town when you're saying to somebody, "Hey, you know what? We're going to bring in new homes and new environments." "Oh, look at these, they're condos. They're twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars a pop." That doesn't change homeownership. That actually doesn't give any new graduate or new family any sort of home equity. You can't go out and plant a garden, peas, just putting tomatoes in your yard. That's not going to be possible here. This is a gated community, and I think we should start calling it what it is. It's going to be Stonehouse Heights, because really, this is your property. There's only two ways in, and they're both on Holly Street unless these designs are wrong. Then there's only one on Lake Shore Drive. So if somebody is on the far side, the north side, closest to five fifty, they have to drive all the way down to NMU to get on the Presque Isle to go all the way back up north. My question is, why can't we put, why can't we ask the developers to put in a strip mall? North side of town needs a lot of development, and it does not need any residential. It needs places to go shopping, it needs places to go walk, it needs places to go hang out like you do at east side of Marquette. Please consider the north side of Marquette just as important.
Mr. Verido. Yes, they did, but again, I suggested to you that I am taking this out of order.
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. As feared, only minimum setback is planned to the west of Lake Shore Boulevard. And the planned style of condominium poses the same types of eyesore that pervade Founder's Landing. I've always favored development on the west edge of Cliff's Dow, although not the twenty-six-unit office park that was approved and planted there in nineteen ninety-eight under the most compelling public opposition. We see the result. At a later time, once this board realized what a foolish decision they'd made, the property was replanted with five businesses going north and south along the west edge, one of which was already developed. This left much more green space to the west of the proposed Lake Shore Boulevard relocation than what is assumed from examining the drawings in tonight's supplement. For twenty years, I've stressed the importance of providing an adequate setback along Cliff's Dow and the Lake Shore site. Look how ugly the Shyras Park Curve looks because this commission ignored over a decade of proactive warnings. This board has got to learn that an adequate setback to the west enhances the visual quality of the planned green space to the east. As of now, this is still public land. The boundaries of the saleable property are up to us. There's no need to milk every square foot out of the west half. Buildings will appear as if they're looming over the road like at Founder's. That would diminish the value of what now appears on the map as a sliver of green space to the east. This board is asked to arrive at a compromise. Another issue is contamination. Many of us feel the contaminants ought to be removed instead of covered over only to become an imminent problem for future generations. If memory serves me, the factory was no longer responsible to remediate its mess once the city bought the property for a dollar, well-knowing this. Surely, this developer isn't responsible, but cleaning and incorporating the whole site as one will better likely result in a more homogeneous development rather than the hodgepodge we find at Lake Shore site. Because this board is famous for ignoring public comment, we're put in the position of appealing to the developer to realize the importance of an adequate setback, which will also benefit the building's residents. I'm in full favor of developing the west edge as I was with this group's development on Washington Street. However, there was some criticism about the amount of space left between the building and busy Washington Street. It's understood that space was limited and that this group did the best job possible under that circumstance. The difference is, there is adequate width to the Cliff's Dows site to situate the development ideally. And I'm not sure if I've ever heard a more compelling comment than Ms. Brum's a few minutes ago.
I had one more person willing to comment. I did not catch your name. I'm sorry, Bonnie Mann, okay, we'll do, if you would go first, please, and Lisa, if you would clean up.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I came into here relatively uninformed and vastly underprepared. First of all, this proposal by Veridia is for condos, correct? Or is it for businesses as well as condos? Is that yet to be determined? Anyone? I'm sorry. This is my first time doing this. Anyhow, so my first concern is that the lack... One of the constituents of the city asked what they would like to see what would happen with this space. I understand that they were forums, but you guys are not nearly trying to bring in enough public opinion on this. I feel very badly that I'm coming here now, and you've probably all made up your minds. And I wish I had known about these things beforehand. Highlight again, my concern for accessible housing, not only for my demographic, but for young families and elders. I do not believe that condos are conducive to our way of life. They are stale, they are stifling, and they are not intimate. You're pushing away locals and not bringing them in. I find it unfortunate that you have decided on a Veridia already, considering they own a lot, and the money from rent would be going directly into their pockets instead of being more just widely distributed to more citizens around Marquette. You also all seem very concerned with Presque Isle and the safety of Presque Isle and the concerns of the environment of Presque Isle, yet not with this area, and you seek only to develop it. I would ask that you just take patience in deciding who you develop it with. Yeah, I'm sorry, my notes are a little bit crazy. I just beg you to consider maybe stalling and looking at more options. And that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Ms. Alexander.
Lisa Alexander, nine two zero Orianna Drive in Marquette, Michigan. I have some prepared comments, but just a side note before I get started. Dennis, that was a fantastic presentation. So the amount of work that you and clearly the board and the city manager have done in preparation of sale for this property is phenomenal. I, as a local community member, had no idea the work that was going on behind the scenes. In fact, I had no idea the property was even for sale. So I think there's a communication opportunity for sure as we move forward and look at ways to engage our community proactively. Just a little side note there. Here are my comments. So obviously, these comments are in regards to the resolution of intention to sell the thirty-two acres of Cliff's Dow property to a single developer. I would like to encourage the city to hold off on accepting such a proposal, and here's why. Now that I've gotten a chance to listen to Dennis, it's pretty clear, just like selling a home, you know, you wait and wait and wait to do all your improvements, and then you go through and you paint, and you put in the new windows, and you put on the new roof. You guys have done all that. And so I feel, to a certain degree, it's kind of like cart before the horse because now that you've done all this work, there's this enormous opportunity to get proposals from multiple developers. In speaking with other local developers, I know there was concern about Lake Shore Boulevard. Some of the local developers had kind of checked out and assumed, "Well, I just really don't want to go there. I don't know what's going on with the environmental stuff. I don't know what's going on with Lake Shore Boulevard. I don't want to develop if my people can't get to their homes or their businesses." All things to kind of keep in mind. Most commercial real estate developers utilize websites like LoopNet to find investment properties. This is the equivalent of Zillow for commercial property, real estate. Cliff's Dow property was not listed on this site, nor was it proactively listed with our own local real estate system known as the Multiple Listing Service, or MLS. Assertive, proactive, and nationwide marketing can generate multiple unique development proposals with a higher sales price for the city. Instead, after being on the market for well over a year or potentially even longer, I'm not really clear on that, we have two development proposals to pick from as a city. In addition, selling the entire thirty-two acres as a single parcel drastically limits your number of prospective developers. The city has a unique opportunity with the Cliff's Dow property to create a virtuous cycle of use by building a diverse development that engages both locals and tourists and makes North Marquette a destination location to be enjoyed by all. The current proposals being considered provide for five hundred residential units. While this meets the needs of some of the goals in the Community Master Plan, many other needs are being neglected. The Community Master Plan clearly spells out a desire for mixed-use development in this area, encouraging tourism, arts, culture, recreation, and community participation with an added goal of being inclusive to all people.
Lisa, time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, I remind you, this will be a roll call. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell the subjected property for to Veridia Group.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner Frazier, further discussion?
This property's been for sale for a while by the city. We've owned it for a long time, and Veridia is not our favorite developer. They're just one of the many developers in town that do a lot of work. They do a very good job. Property they've built over the years, they do a great job, and they develop it very well. So they don't just say, "Okay, we're going to do something," and then don't do it. They actually do it, they're like the old bunny bread site. Amazingly, they're that, but they don't find those lines, it's great. All these projects we sell to developers, they actually do, which is like, there's been a lot of developers willing to do it. They just didn't want to take it on. Veridia Group did a great job, and they know what they're doing. And I assume before they build anything, they'll do testing. They make Mr. Brum happy, they'll do testing. That's probably half the reason why Founder's Landing, where the condos are partially blocking the highways, because they put about six feet of fill on top of the actual ground to prevent any waste getting into buildings and stuff like that. So people develop these brownfield properties. I assume they know what they're doing, so I hope they can do a good job, and I look forward to the project. I hope they can do a good job, and I look forward to the project.
Commissioner Smith?
So, this has been a long time coming. This is something I knew about before I was on the commission. Once I got on the commission, it has been addressed in strategic planning, in kind of a hopeful item, if we were able to kind of get through some next steps on our sleeping dragons list, which is kind of a list of projects that we have been putting off, dealing with for many, many years. I was a member of the committee that helped bring this forward tonight. I do support moving forward and allowing the city manager to negotiate a sale. I would like to see what that looks like in the end. My endorsement and vote tonight does not mean that I'm going to vote yes on the actual sale. I want to see what that looks like, and I've got some caveats on that. So, this is the first public step in the process of making that sale happen, but it's not the end of the conversation. So, I know for some people, this was news tonight, but there will be more opportunities. Reach out to us, let us know your thoughts now. Now is a good time to talk, and also, this will be at a future meeting. Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Okay, so, I went back and I looked at how many times this has come up, and I realize this is new for some of you, but this is my sixth year here, and 16 meetings I've had on Cliff's Dull and this particular property, and what we needed to do with it in the future of it. I know that it's, you know, kind of scary. This is a big piece of property, we're talking about a lot of things, you know? We're asking a developer to come in and do some cool stuff here. But as, thank you, by the way, Dennis, for your presentation, that next step part is the most important part. We have five more steps before it comes back to us for the actual sale. And that those renderings don't mean, what they do is they put something on paper, so this is what it could look like, this is the biggest it would look like as a footprint. And with that, I'm going to ask Michelle to come up, because she's available for questions. But the problem I had with one of the questions is, Michelle, if you could come up, and I'll ask that question now. There's a lot of dumpster fire stuff, as Dennis put it, that people put out there that is not necessarily truths, and I wasn't in those meetings with the three people, but is it going to be condos necessarily?
No.
Okay. What's?
The plan that you have before you represents, as you've said, it's a conceptual site, it's not even a conceptual site plan. It's a conceptual site concept that shows what can be put on that land. It's not going to look like a Gulag, it's not going to look like Legos on paper, it's not entirely condominiums. What we envision for the site, if we purchase the site, first, if you first say you'd like to negotiate the sale of the site with us, and then we manage to do all of the due diligence that goes into coming up with something that we're all agreeable to, and we do buy the site, and we do develop the site, we envision a mix of housing types and housing prices. There will be some condominiums, there will be townhomes, there could be single-family homes, and there will be senior living.
Okay, and I think that's important to know, and I think it's important when we talk about things like market analysis, that's actually things that the city needs right now. It's not just necessarily low-income housing. Senior housing is the one that is the most requested right now, and I hear that day in and day out. So, it's nice to hear that you're looking at all different types of housing, and that's the kind of thing we need. But that's still in the future. That's entirely in the future. Right now, all we're saying is, "Hey, we're bringing this to us, we're looking at it." You guys could say no, if you think it's, after doing your due diligence, and it's polluted as all, get up and you say, "I don't want to touch that anymore." So, I'm just, it gets a little bit frustrating after doing this for six years and having this many meetings on it. So, with that, I just wanted to, I'm done for now, but I will be voting yes on this. And I think it's important that we keep moving forward with this property.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Campana?
With all due respect, I do understand Mrs. Brums' knowledge of the situation. But I believe that the people at the DEQ, their new name now, you know, they have people there that are highly qualified to determine how that property is and when it can be used. I don't believe that they would let that go up for development, thinking, you know, and thinking and knowing that it might not be safe for people. They too have scientists, they have experts that understand the safety of the property. We also have an environmental company that is doing testing there. They are scientists, they are college-educated, they know what they're doing. I have faith in the people who are monitoring this property. So, I have faith that if they say it's okay, I believe it's okay. If they say you can't dig down 10 feet, well, then we go with that. But if they say you can build on it, I believe you can build on it. You have Veridia who wants to do a development there, and I have all the faith in the world in Veridia. They've proved it around town. They are very capable, when they say they're going to take on a project, they can finish that project, and they're going to do it well. The projects that they finish and develop are very appealing to the city. They're going to make the city look good. I have no qualms that they will do a fine job there. They will try to do affordable housing, but they, you know, they will, they can't lose money in what they're doing. They are a for-profit company, and they deserve to make a profit, and they will, just the fact that they're going to try to make housing affordable resonates well with me. So, I think this is a good project going forward.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that this is the beginning of potentially, you know, a very successful development for us. Houses, condos, senior care, mixed-use, all of these things are hot buttons within our master plan, within our economic plan. I have to go along with what Commissioner Campana just said, as far as the experts from Eagle, the MDEQ. We have to lean on them and make sure that what we're doing is going to be safe for what, for what our future is going to be for these residents. Obviously, we wouldn't go through and intentionally put something up on a cesspool that's going to end up causing, you know, sicknesses and things along these lines. So, I was also in the group of, along with the mayor and Commissioner Jen, next to me here, Commissioner Smith, but my point that I would like to bring up going through that meeting was how receptive Veridia was to these concerns that everybody is bringing up, whether it be affordable. What is affordable housing in the city of Marquette? It's a pretty tough question to ask right now. You know, people can say it's somewhere around $200, $250,000. I'd like to see it at $100, $150,000. But, you know what? I'm not the one that's investing the money into this project. So, but I can tell you that they're very receptive to all of the ideas that people are concerned about now, and I really look forward to seeing what kind of a site plan review can they come up with, and bring back to us to be reviewed, and that the process can get moving now, and see what the appraised value is, and go from there. Thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
So, I'm going to say a few things. First, yeah, I'll give a little bit of my background that I don't talk about that much, because I tend, you know, I've lived in Marquette for five years, and it's an honor to get to represent this community. But one of the things I bring to this community is the experience that I have living in other communities. I was lucky enough to get to attend the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. I graduated with a master's degree in environmental planning in 1995. I took classes in environmental chemistry, I took classes on community development, community process, and the difficult questions of risk perception and risk management. I went on to work for the Northeast Business Environmental Network. I was their founding executive director, where I worked on, worked with the industrial facilities that were tasked with dealing up, dealing with contamination from the 1800s. This is Massachusetts, there were, and one of them was even made into a movie called A Civil Action with John Travolta, which you can go rent on Netflix, where the past practices of, that were, meaning there were none, were coming to fore 100 years, literally 100 years later. And the good folks were working really hard and diligently to continue to try to make these places livable. I then went on to work, I'd be the founding executive director, so I was hired to start this organization, called Groundwork. And that groundwork was part of an international network of brownfield redevelopment organizations in England, and 60 of them are now across the United States. I was the sixth one that we founded in Somerville, Massachusetts. So, the, so I have experience with brownfields. And the question of how clean is clean is a philosophical question and not a scientific question. And that's why it's often helpful to have the conversation in the community, to think about what do we want to have be, how we want to proceed going forward, understanding that, and recognizing the work and toil that would happen, and people's, you know, made their livings working at this factory, making charcoal, and yet we, and we bought the property for a dollar, and now we have this legacy that we have to deal with. There's a, there's a complete story there of people, place. And what I, what, the concerns that I raised this morning on Facebook were because that was the venue that I had at the time. I was given information on Friday about today. And I understand that there are people here who have been working on this since 1997, but I'm being asked to do this on three days' notice. So, yes, I somewhat, somewhat intentionally, but also absolutely honestly said, "I don't know what's going on, so I will take ownership of that." And some people reacted, you know, without maybe necessarily wanting, you know, have, they, you bring to that what you will, what you, your previous, you bring to that your preconceived notions about government in particular. But what I was saying was, yes, it is incumbent upon us as government folks that we have to repeat to ourselves, to the public, over and over and over again, this is what's going on. That's just what happens, because somebody new is going to walk into the room, who's never been here before, who's going to get a wonderful education, and be impressed at the incredible work that government people do every day. Okay. Now, so, with all of that said, when you hear the phrase, "With all due respect," which was said several times tonight, folks might just disagree on what we want to do in this location. And that's healthy, that's going to happen in a community, and, but I think it's a healthier way to say that, is people are disagreeing. It's not just that people are complaining. I think we actually truly might disagree about what the future of this community is supposed to look like. So, and that's okay. That's what a healthy democracy looks like. But I really take issue with maybe thinking about people complaining. We're disagreeing about the future and what needs to happen in this location. It's a really critical piece, and it's public land right now. Another reason that we're having this conversation is it's public land. This is our land, all of us in this community. So, I have, and it was a terrific presentation on the history of how we got here, which has not been laid out before, as far as I know. So, I'm really glad that it exists now, and that we can have that going forward. That was also one of my key objectives in raising the questions this morning, was what, what is going on? What happened? Now, it's been laid out in a PowerPoint, hopefully that can be shared, and people can better understand. Okay, two fundamental questions. Why do we have to start the offer of selling before we have an agreement with Eagle on what is allowed on the site? I really don't understand why we have to move forward with the sale if we don't have final authority from the, from the environmental regulators. Could someone please answer that question?
I'll take a stab at it. It's not an excuse, but the sequence of events was such that when we put the RFQs out a year and a half ago, Eagle was assuring us we were this close to being cleared, or passed, so to speak. Since that time, and it's not uncommon for state and federally-run organizations to change direction midstream, we had put out the RFQs, we moved ahead with the, with the sale of the property. The sale of the property was integral, in large part, to our overall plan of replacing the loss of We Energy as a tax base. And so, we just moved ahead with the sale, anticipating the DEQ at the time to clear us. The DEQ did not clear us entirely, yet indicated they were still willing to work with us to reach that clearance, and I'm using generic terms here. And so, we decided that there's, it makes no sense to go backwards, we were already ahead or moving ahead quite a ways in the process. We put a lot of work into it, a lot of time, and so, we decided, as a staff with commission support at the time, to continue to move ahead with the process. It's my understanding, and Dennis can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but that we can, we can go, we can do this either way, the way we're doing it now, or the way you might be suggesting.
Yeah, I actually have something pretty important to add to that, that's more specific to your question, Commissioner Hill, but the MDEQ relies on engineered controls for buildings when they're built. And an example of an engineered control would be a vapor barrier, which is basically thicker concrete. Or not permitting residences on the first floor, you have to have a vapor barrier, and parking would be underneath the residence, or something like that. But DEQ is, or Eagle, they are reactive. So, we, because of those engineered controls, we, or any developer, can't go to Eagle, and particularly us as a government, we can't go to Eagle and say, "We think we would like to have this on the property, can we get that clearance ahead of time?" They won't tell us, yes. They are very, because they deal in science and in engineering, as you know, they are very specific to what it's going to be. So, "We're going to put a duplex on this property, here is our specific engineered control." They will say yes or no. But they won't grant you any projection out on top of that, which is why we are going in the order we are now.
That's very helpful. And it also gets to the question of, this question of how we manage groundwater, which I can, I also understand, that when groundwater that you're not drinking is not, is regulated in a different way than groundwater that we might be drinking. So, it also feeds into how you are looking at what could happen instead of what is there, which I think partly is what you're saying, I think, yeah. And, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, being a municipal unit of government that has a water system, the groundwater contamination is basically not treated so much as a direct human consumption issue, because we have our own water system. The issue at hand is you have residual contaminants that are going into Lake Superior and polluting a body of the Great Lakes.
And that subsequently is not necessarily even a threat to the ecosystem, it's because that's where you talked about the mixing and what might happen there, as I understand it. So, there's a potential that what, the work that's already been done is enough, it goes back to that question of how clean is clean. And so, is it enough to say, "We can live with this"? I mean, we all actually also live with a lot of poly, you know, aromatic hydrocarbons and all these other things that are coming off of our cars every day, that are some of the the same chemicals that we're talking about here. We just don't really notice them because they're all around us every day. So I'm not saying that, you know, this is, this is not the situation that I referred to earlier in the civil action or what happened, may have, you might remember Love Canal, where people were literally drinking and showering, in particular, the worst is, turns out, is taking a shower in water that has some of this stuff and it's very risky. So I, I want to be clear, I understand that this is not necessarily a project that is exposing people to significant risk. But what we are potentially setting ourselves up for is the cost of managing what's there. And that was another fundamental concern I had, having worked on different brownfield projects. If we are asked to contain what's called a plume, this underground bunch of stuff that's sort of moving around in the sand down there, we are putting ourselves at a financial obligation into the future for a very, at an unknown cost. Because we bought that land for a dollar and did not leave the liability with the people that actually did the damage, which was this company. So, you've been very good listening to me. My other fundamental question, so on the question of why we're moving ahead on the sale, I hear that we're moving ahead on the sale because we are looking at how to take a piece of property that we've been wanting to make into a part of our community instead of being vacant. Okay. My other question about this particular developer is, what about Spring and Third and what about the hospital site?
We closed on Third and Main on Friday, the twenty-fifth, or was that Thursday? I'm sorry, my days are, it's summer. We own the property. We are getting ready to put our plan together to bring to planning commission. We'll have to go through full site plan review. That property is, it's different. That property is, is more of a mixed-use building, a commercial building, something that's intended for downtown development. The hospital property, we continue to work through due diligence. There's, there's not been any agreement met there.
So the, fundamentally, it's, how many obligations can you take on in this community at the same time?
That'd really be a question for the man who signs my paychecks. But I can assure you that he is a thoughtful man who doesn't enter into things lightly. If he, I'll just leave it at that.
And I, so that leaves it, I think, responsibility for us at the city commission level. If the hospitals, if Cliff Dows sells and the hospital site doesn't sell, what, what's our obligation to, to the community, to what's going to happen to that vacant land? That, that, or not vacant, it's this complicated mess of...
Let me interject. We don't have a responsibility for the hospital in any way or any regard. That is private property at this point.
Well, if it becomes a...
We might look at it differently. It still is private property and whether or not that hospital goes or doesn't go is strictly right now with Duke LifePoint.
And so my, and so the larger point again is the question of what is the future of this community and what are we doing with these large parcels of land? And how are we participating as a community in what goes forward in those projects? So, and that's not going to get solved tonight.
Excuse me, Commissioner Hill, are you, are you done asking me questions?
Oh, um, fair, sorry.
It's okay.
The, yeah, that was, that was my, and I did, I had no idea that the, the sale had actually happened on Spring and Third, so that's great news. And I am happy to hear that that project moved forward because infield development's a really good idea, so thank you.
Thank you. And I guess, if I may, I would say you, you know, you've asked about what your obligation is to the community and I would say, Veritae is a local company. We're owned by a family that lives here locally and we employ local people. We all live here. We also feel that we have an obligation to the community.
That's, I think it's good for, for people to hear that and I appreciate that. Thank you. So, you know, how we, I, I, I'm, I really hoped that part of what would happen is we'd all have a better understanding of how this all goes forward after this. There's been so much concern about how things played out in the many years of founders landing. Can we, let's get this project off to a better start, perhaps, or at least a way that is trans, it's, hopefully allows more people to understand what all the steps are. So I applaud again that this PowerPoint was put together and I hope that it becomes a, an ability to continue to be more transparent about what the steps are going forward. Thanks for, thanks for letting me have the floor for so long.
You're very welcome. Commissioners, any other questions, comments, concerns? We do have Mr. Stackowitz available, if you have any questions regarding his presentation. I have a, yeah, we've already done that, that was a long time ago. Clerk, if you could please conduct the election, election.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Campana.
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Having an election. Yes.
Oh, I haven't voted. Do you have to make my mind? Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds.
Yes.
And Mayor Stonehouse.
Yes. The resolution passes seven zero. That brings us down to item nine, which is a capital improvement bonds notice of intent. That also must be a roll call vote. Strangely, I see no one signed up to comment on that. Number nine.
Yep, nine and ten.
Clerk, if you would please read the, the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, in order to start the process of issuing capital improvement bonds for fiscal year nineteen projects, a resolution must be approved that will authorize a notice of intent to be published. The notice of intent serves as a forty-five day referendum notice in accordance with Public Act thirty-four. This Public Act states that if ten percent of the registered electors of the city file a referendum petition within forty-five days of publication of the notice, then the bonds cannot be issued without voter approval. The resolution also authorizes that the city may reimburse itself for expenditures made prior to the actual issuance of the bonds. This language is needed in order to comply with federal tax laws for tax exempt bonds. Projects proposed to be financed with this bond issue are attached. These are projects that have been included in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget as approved. A final amount tally will be presented before the bonds are actually issued. Fiscal, of fiscal effect, the debt service schedule will be produced when the bonds are issued. Recommendation, approve a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount to, not to exceed five million, five hundred thousand dollars for capital improvements and authorize the clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Ms. Luttenberger.
Thank you. Matt Luttenberger, fourteen oh six, Garfield Ave, here in the City of Marquette. I come to you today because, on this subject, because this also goes back to the disrespect to citizens when we come up and actually ask questions. I, I saw an older woman come up who said she lives on Division Street and the whole discussion from that kind of revolved around, "Yeah, we know it's bad, but we're not going to fix it yet." And no offense, I've heard that many times on things that I've said or ignored, which is fine, but yet this seems to be something where here we've got bonds that are going out to fix roads. Again, I have no map, so I don't know what these roads are unless I go home and hold the, the bonds up to my city laminate map. So in some way, this goes to, my roads are being fixed right now. A block away from me, I can't turn left or right. I couldn't go straight for three weeks. These projects seem to, seem to have no representation. We don't have any ability other than in our own mind, where is Park Street? In our own mind, which is Magnetic Street? I don't have it printed out here, so I can't really rattle off the ones that we are doing. But I can say College Ave got, got money pulled two years ago so that the Maritime Museum and Lighthouse Park can have parking. When are you putting that money back into that road? And if that's the reason Veritae can't sell the, or Duke LifePoint can't sell the project because they, those two are having issues with what you're going to do? Mr. Frazier, you pointed out many times that, you know, it's just what we did. We, we decided to stop until the sale went through. Well, then you as a city actually have a concern with what is going to happen on that site. You as a city have the right to fix the road. And I'm sorry, I'm yelling, but fix the road. This, this motion tonight that you're doing, number nine, about fiscal year two thousand nineteen, does not fix Division Street for this woman who has been asking for it for at least fifteen years, she said. When are you going to fix Division Street? When, and the only other result that I heard from that night was, "Oh, it has to do with the lateral replacements." Well, great. When, where, how, many times? And are you, I also heard another, these are not me, by the way. I'm repeating what other people have said to you. So I'm sorry if it sounds like I'm being repetitive or obnoxious, but it sounds like you didn't hear them when they asked, "Why don't we get notices anymore in our, in our billing cycle that says, 'Hey, guess what? Next month, you're going to get a road project done.'" Or, "Hey, guess what? This is going on to, you know, around your neighborhood." I'm asking for the city to be more diligent and more proactive in your communications in the graphic form. This seems like something you're neglecting and doing it on purpose because multiple people have asked and you seem to ignore us all.
Ms. DeVerito, I think you're up next.
No, I'm not.
No, you're not? No, I am. Ms. Brum, are you up?
Nope, not on this one, I'm on the next one.
I think that's the end of it.
Yep.
We got a deal. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Mayor Protem Reynolds, I'm sliding.
I move that we approve the notice of intent of resolution to issue and sell the general obligatory bonds in the amount of not to exceed five million, five hundred thousand dollars for capital improvements and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution.
Commissioner Frazier.
I second the motion.
Anything further?
That this is what we do every year to authorize to make the, to do the bonds.
Bonds to keep the city going and we haven't fixed that road by the hospital yet because, not because we don't want to, but because it could be damaged more during construction. We don't know exactly, Veritae doesn't know exactly what they could do. They could be tearing down, could be heavy equipment. So if we do fix the road, it'd be nice and pretty, then it could get ruined by equipment on the road. So once the hot, once the Veritae gets done redoing the hospital, then we will fix the road. As far as when roads gets done, City Manager can speak to that. He spoke to before. There's a plan in place for roads to get fixed. And as far as when you know if roads, there's PSA announcements, City Mayor shows, there's PSA announcements saying, "Okay, this road's going to be worked on today, like Front Street was worked on." There's announcements saying Front Streets can be closed, so it's such a date, this project should be going on. So there's, the city does do a good job announcing when projects are going on.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, this is a roll call.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Campana.
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier.
Yep.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds.
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse.
Yes. Item number ten, redemption of the Hartwood Forest bonds. If you could please read the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, bonds were issued in two thousand and seven to fund the purchase of what is known as the Hartwood Forest land property. Portions of this property have been sold and sufficient funds have been accumulated in order to pay off the remaining debt service principal amount of two, two million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If approved, the bonds will be scheduled to be redeemed on September fifth, two thousand nineteen. Original maturity is in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. An average annual debt service is approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Redeeming the bonds at this earlier date will save over four hundred thousand dollars in future interest expense that would have been, been the remaining life of the bonds. Fiscal effect, sufficient funds have been accumulated to pay the remaining principal of two million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Recommendation, approve a resolution authorizing redemption of general obligation limited tax refunding bonds, series two thousand and seven taxable, and authorize the clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, your pleasure. What? Oh, Matt. Matt, you have your opportunity. Ed Margaret, in order.
Matt Luttenberger, fourteen oh six, Garfield Ave, here in the City of Marquette. I initially had a few questions about this one, but I guess you guys don't answer questions, so here we go. I'm just going to ask them anyways. Is this redemption early because we sold property to Veritae last year? Is this redemption early because we were able to sell property to SEMCO and result, and receive some of the funds from the timber cuts that are on that property? Hartwood Forest, you know, the bonds themselves, I'm glad we're getting it off the, off the books. At the same time, this isn't a lot of money. We could have done this on a bond, of a bond, of a bond. But again, I, I had questions of why this was able to be done so early. Is it because of the sales? Is it because of the other purchases that happened? And at the same time, does that then, are we putting on hold any development that might happen in Hartwood because we've sold it off? I mean, that was the biggest push. We kept saying, "We've got to sell Hartwood property, we've got to develop Hartwood, we've got to manage this because we've got us, an actual purchase price or a, a purchase that we have to pay off." Now that's done, can we treat it as this America Tree Farm? I mean, literally, can we do what we're doing on Presque Isle at Hartwood Forest? And it sounds like it's a free program. All we've got to do is ask for a management system for Hartwood Forest. And I would love to see that. I think we as a city kind of deserve it as a city to say, "This is how we're going to preserve this." Because there's a lot of questions. And whenever you guys say, "Well, we've already had a talk about this," or "It's been going on for so many years," there's already somebody who's discussed it. Well, it's probably true. Same time, you don't record work sessions, so I don't know what the agreement was in this past recession as to what you guys agreed to and why it has to be so quick. But again, the redemption of the bonds, by all means, if a city can pay off our debt, do it. Do it as soon as possible. I highly recommend any way to do that. But that's the sense of now that we've got it paid off, what are we doing with Hartwood? Is it going to be managed more effectively? Are we still selling off pieces of property? Last couple of meetings, there's been people asking about the interior of Hartwood and how to access it. These are all things that I, I want to hear you guys talk about now, that you've, no longer have a financial obligation for selling or managing Hartwood Forest. We now have a recreation obligation. And it would be nice to hear the, the progression as a city from you saying, "One of these programs that we have going on in another part of our city could be implemented at this piece of property now that we no longer have to sell it or develop it or somehow get rid of it." At the same time, you guys have a city property. You can sell all of Hartwood Forest if you wish. Please don't.
Hello again. Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic. The agenda was posted on Friday and I read over the weekend that we were going to be able to redeem the Hartwood Forest bonds early. And the first thought I had was, well, twelve years of payment on bonds. I guess under municipal code that would be considered early, but I'm, I'm still, the phrase early, I, I appreciate somebody explaining to me how long, long is if twelve years is early. Secondly, I have one very basic question. I am laboring under the burden that the Hartwood Forest property was a huge purchase of over five million dollars of money. And at the end, when it was divided up and sold, it basically was a wash and the city didn't make a dime from the sale. Please, would someone answer that question? I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying from what I can tell, you bought the property to make some money on it, you paid twelve years of bonds, I mean, not you, the citizens of Marquette did, and now we're, we're paying it off early. I'm sorry, I can't, I'm getting the giggles when I hear early. I'm sorry, I can't, I'm getting the giggles when I hear early after 12 years. But did we as a city make any money on the Hartwood Forest properties? Because I've done the math several times and at best it's a, it's a wash and at worst, we've lost money and all the interest we've had to pay. And I think as taxpayers, as people who trying to approve these deals, there's so much money at stake here. I think that question should be answered and I would appreciate it if Mr. Hi, could answer that. I'm, I'm looking at this chief financial officer for the city, if he could maybe answer that. Thank you for your time.
Not any further public comment. Seeing none, commissioners, motion in front of you. Mayor Protem.
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of the general obligation limited tax refunding bonds, Series 2017 taxable and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hill.
I second the motion.
Commissioner, or Mayor Protem, any further comments?
Just to answer Mr. Luttenberger's question, yes. This is from the sale proceeds that we are using to pay off the bonds and yes, it is early. Pretty much we were paying interest only prior to this, so this is getting it off of our rolls.
Commissioner Hill.
Um, I also have a question to going to the future use and management of the land. So we've sold off some pieces, some pieces we're getting, the city's going to retain. There's one parcel left that's going to be sold to, that we're in negotiation with to sell to NTN. It's my understanding that there's going to be easements now on the land that would be handled by one nonprofit organization and that other, that, but it's not clear to me what NTN's role is going to be going forward, seeing how much they've invested in this property. And what are the qualifications for deciding what organization's going to get easements on this property?
I can answer that. We, as, as part of protecting some of the property, well, we place conservation easements or we're going to place conservation easements on property within the city limits. Not necessarily the property we sold, but the property that's remaining in the city limits that we still own. And we, we're, those were the conservation easements are going to go. And that's basically to ensure that they will be not sold or not developed into the future, which was a high priority for the public and, and the commission. The remainder of the property that which is outside the city limits and primarily in Marquette Township has been designated as conservation by the land use study that was completed as well as the, and approved by the commission. So that basically has been put into, designated as conservation. In other words, recreation, we're not going to develop it. We have no plans to, or nor do we have any need to sell any more property. As you mentioned, this initiated, the sales initiated to help us build a reserve, to help us pay off his debt, which it has done. And just to clarify a little bit further, the city was putting aside a full mill every year to pay for this property, about $450,000 into a bond payment and about $200,000 into a reserve, which also accumulated and was, is being spent to help us pay off this debt. Now, Gary helped me out here, but the bond was 15-year, 20-year, probably? So I'll let Gary explain what early means.
Believe it or not, this is a good news story, but it's kind of hard to tell. So we originally issued a bond in 2005, that's when the property was purchased. But it was going to be a complicated deal because a majority of the property was going to be used for parks and recreation purposes. And that part of the bond could be tax exempt. Now, a small part of the property, I believe it's less than a third of the property, was going to be used to hopefully sell to developers to help pay for some of it. I don't think the plan was it was going to completely pay for it all, but play, pay for some of the property. And that part would have to be a taxable bond. So the way we did it back in 2005, we had issued an interest only, into an interest only agreement to where for two years, we could pay only interest until the city commission, you know, gave the plans of how they wanted to divide up the property. And we came up upon the two-year clicking, clicking clock and no decision could be made. So at that time, we were forced to issue the whole bond as a taxable bond, which the difference is it's a higher interest rate. So since 2005, we've been paying taxable bond interest rates. And it was really a 20-year bond, but going back to 2005, we issued the new bond in 2007. And that's the one that we're going to redeem. So that's probably a little more information than you wanted, but that's, that's the story behind it all, so.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana.
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds.
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse.
Yes. That brings us down to public comments. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name, physical address when making public comments.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I debated long and hard about coming here tonight and saying what I said. I didn't think it would make any difference, but I have to live with myself too. And I owe my knowledge and my experience to the citizens of Marquette, just as you do. You're on a slippery slope here, and I know you're not supposed to use the word you because it's accusative, but this commission just voted to initiate sales of a property that they know to be contaminated with chemicals. Now, Mr. Campana, Commissioner Campana, and I've had many discussions and I have a great deal of respect for him. But when he says he relies upon the state regulators to keep us safe, I was just screaming, my brain almost said it out loud, was, the people of Flint relied upon state regulators to keep them safe too. Once you've dug into the ground and released those chemicals, the government will not keep you safe. And I'm saying that as a citizen and as an engineer. Once you've dug into the ground and released those chemicals, no regulator is going to keep you safe. Secondly, about the Cliff's Dull situation, I sense from some of Commissioner Hill's comments, just a fundamental lack of familiarity with the history of Cliff's Dull. At any given time, if you'd like to sit down and talk about it, we'd be happy to run it by you. Anybody who was in town before 69 when it shut down, when you heard the word Cliff's Dull, you didn't think of Cliff's Dull, you thought of the smell. And that smell's going to come back. And I don't mean that vulgarly, I mean, when they dig in the ground, that smell is going to come back because it's there, it's saturated. And number three, I have a great deal of respect for the hard work that you do in making these decisions and I know that money talks. But in this particular case, I'm going to use a very strong term here. I think you're playing Russian roulette with the future of Marquette. I think your desire to get money in your pockets to pay for vitally important projects is overwhelming your common sense. Literally, unless you put into the deed, and I'm talking to the city attorney now, unless that's a requirement of the sale, that they put into the deed that every person who purchases property, whatever shape it is, knows that they bought property that was built on the former Superfund site, you are, not just the chemical obligations, but the legal, legal risks that you are encompassing are enormous. Because failure to warn when you know that there's a chemical contamination is a very serious thing. So I said my piece. I said it based on what was true to me. I didn't rely upon other experts. I had personal knowledge which I shared. I want you to know, I'll be watching this very carefully. Thank you very much.
Anyone else, public comment?
Yeah, Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. So the consent agenda, I wanted to talk about, which I don't understand if it takes a roll call vote, why we can't talk about it. It is a city work, public works. But to the Guts Frisbee Tournament, to anybody who wants to know what CSU is, or SISU is personified, please go watch this game, the tournament itself, all weekend, there's lots of fun, family activities. By all means, we do it every year and we do it well. This is one of those things that you can play dodgeball, but can you play dodgeball with a disc? Second would be the Orde Shore Special Events Permit. Again, this is one of those crowning moments of Marquette achievements. We've been working hard and long time on making this event happen every year. So giving props to those organizers and those riders was one of those important comments that I wanted to make during the consent agenda. And so good luck to both teams and riders and teams of riders and all the activities that are going on for that fun time. Again, these are things that we do as activities and we, we seem to forget about it as developing. I mean, no offense, but these properties that you're selling are not houses. They're not private properties. They're, they're becoming private properties. So you have a little bit more of an obligation than just, oh, we're going to sell it to somebody. Because again, I would have written out a check for you and put it on your desk, just like Founder's Landing did to Mayor Coin or Mayor Tureville. And Mr. Stonehouse was sitting in the left over there. So yes, by all means, I would have written the check and said, I want to start discussions about what property can be done and what is going to be done. And I would love to hear a competitive analysis from what Verida gave you and what I suggested. And by all means, you didn't ask me for any further details, so I couldn't really present them uncalled for. The RFP, like I said, wasn't really accurate. So again, I would have loved to put a million point, $2 million into a purchase agreement for a park that would have allowed for adventure centers and water slides and zip lines and festivals on the north side of town. Something that it really is neglected by you. I remember sitting up here when Mayor DePietro said he was waiting his whole time before he was on the commission. He was on his fifth year and then he got elected as mayor. And it was a joke that he had to become mayor for the north side of Marquette to get paved roads in the year post 2000. I forget which one it was, could have been 2009 for all I know. But again, it seems like you, you have this idea about your role in government or these purchase agreements as, oh, we'll just let somebody give us money and then they tell us what they want to do with it. That seems very irresponsible for the city of Marquette and I hope you would step up your game.
Anyone else, public comment?
Bonnie Mann, 412 South Front Street. Okay, I completely agree with you, Commissioner Hill, on what you're saying, that it is a philosophical difference. I wasn't necessarily as concerned about the environment, obviously that's a concern, but my dad works for Eagle Mine. I know that there are responsible cleanup practices out there. I truly believe that it can be cleaned up. My philosophical difference is I feel like this is a city that I am going to not want to live in in 20 years. I, I'm upset by the development of the Lake Shore. Mr. Frazier, I felt some of your arguments were kind of one-offs and not really acceptable reasons for the selling this property without more consideration. I understand that it has been a long time in the process and I'm very upset that there was not more transparency with the public. I don't see myself living here in 20 years. I'm not sure, you know, she said that there's going to be more affordable housing, but I look at the housing condos that are over there now and I absolutely can't afford one and I make a decent wage. And so I just felt like it was important for you to know that. I was also a little, a little upset to see that everything is so unanimous. I wish there had been more discussion, I'm making sure you do that in your own private time, but that was a little disheartening as well. And I certainly look forward to being more informed in the future and attending more forums and commissions and, you know, trying to be as part of, as much a part of this community as long as I feel like I want to. Thank you.
Frank Jeff Verdo, these are my opinions. A man informed me that he politely told Mr. Schlegel he's concerned with so many trees coming down. He's not the kind of man who picks bones with anyone. Yet Mr. Schlegel got smart alecky with him, just as he did with me after a recent meeting. There was no excuse for any member to mock our concerns so long as we speak decorously about legitimate matters. We keep enduring situations where Mr. Frazier repeats himself without acknowledging prior responses to the very concerns he addresses. He says I keep telling this board what a bad job it's doing, yet he won't intelligibly address the specifics. He said Mr. Campana wanted to help Third Street business owners, yet didn't acknowledge that I'd stated wanting to help them too. Mr. Frazier also repeated that I have to focus on what's happening now. Both nights, most of my comments pertained to this current board and the worst manager the city has seen in 21 years. Mr. Frazier must have spaced out comments on beach erosion, Museum Drive and the new park bench that already looks as if it's impacting the beach grass. All relevant items of this current board. He's incognizant of what's been said. He keeps repeating that I should run for office. It's been explained, too many reasons to list. There are only seven seats, many times that people amount to make a difference. He's asked to realize he's incapable of serving on this board and please resign. We know it's a hard job, we don't need him to remind us. If the job's too hard for any member, please leave. Mr. Frazier claims I attend no work sessions, which is not only untrue, but hypocritical. We seldom saw him at these meetings before he was paid, or maybe he had an item on the agenda. Then he suggested I said how bad someone's family is? He, he didn't get that from me. I mean, whose family is he speaking of? Serious issues surround his performance. His body occupies that seat, yet he repeats and repeats such that we get nowhere. It's like fighting a second grader, which no one would want to be seen on live TV doing.
Mr. Verdo, please keep your comments to the issues.
Why would someone like to be seen on, on live TV, as he accuses? Focused on the negative when so much positive is also happening. I admit though, that it's fun to be right. This will continue until a viable public process is instituted, at which time I'll encourage board membership, but not until our concerns are prioritized by value rather than who's making the request and members address the specifics without trying to deceive the audience. To date, my service on a board and at work sessions were wastes of time. At least here, there's an audience to hear the truth. My dedication, credibility and love for Marquette are clear. 350 meetings now and only paid in aggravation and encouragement from various residents. The last reasons most of us moved here were for heavy traffic, the demise of our green spaces and dealing with either a good or a bad commission. And nothing I said was out of line. Ask your attorney.
Commissioners.
I'm public.
Good evening, Berry Poles and 101 North Lake Shore Boulevard. Yeah, just sitting here, I'm, I'm encouraged by the participation we're actually having at these meetings, you know? I mean, Frank is, you know, always here and, but it's nice to see other people coming too. And I, this is really a message to you guys, okay, and to anybody else out there. The process for shaping Marquette, the physical form that we, like buildings we build and the patterns we develop, are governed by the zoning ordinance, the Land Development Code, which was just passed, we just passed a new one. And the process to influence that is to get involved in that. The city commission here does the business of the city. The planning commission does that shaping of the city. So really encourage you to come to those meetings. I'm in a lot of planning commission meetings. There's very little public input. Now, maybe I shouldn't ask for it, but I do. Come, come and let's hear what you have to say. Come to those meetings. We have a brand new land development code, we're all feeling our way through it. But I encourage you to come and get involved at that level. Because that's really where the, the aesthetic, you know, the pattern decisions are actually made. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Three minutes goes fast. Lisa Alexander, 920 Orianna Drive in Marquette. These are exciting meetings. Like I know where to come for excitement on a Tuesday, guys, this is great. So obviously, we all have the best interests of the city of Marquette at heart. So that being said, I think that- So, that being said, I think that we as a community, we as a commission, we as a planning group, have an enormous amount of sway. I think if we're gonna go with already, they're phenomenal. They do beautiful developments. But as we work through that process, be it with them or with someone else, comes back to this whole, what do we want that area to look like? And I think we have to make sure we really ask ourselves, because we have an opportunity. It's multi-use, which means you can do residential, you can do commercial. And I have to object, Pete, I really like you, but you can actually influence developers with some subtle and kind encouragement. I think as we look at the Cliff Dow property, there's an enormous opportunity for us to make it not a drive-by location, but a drive-in destination. I think already, as long as they're making money, they're gonna be happy. And I think you can make it a spot that not only meets the needs from a residential perspective, but also can integrate some commercial aspects that would appeal to the entire community. So just to finish up the comments that I didn't get to finish, because three minutes goes fast, what I was saying before is, imagine driving down Lake Shore Boulevard and seeing green spaces and artists painting outdoors near their co-op studios, encouraging tourists to stop in and purchase their local art pieces. Imagine a home for local theater groups, a permanent home. A place where residents and tourists can dine at a delicious lakeside restaurant, and then take in a wonderful local theater production. Consider the possibilities with a development that encourages community participation while generating substantial tax revenues for the city. We can ha, we have, right now, a once-in-a-generation opportunity with the development of Cliff Dow. Let's be brave, let's be bold, and gently encourage something that the entire community can enjoy. Thank you, and I even finished early.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Hill, if you would begin with your comment?
Exciting meeting, and certainly long, and, but lots of very important topics got discussed. We've completed a bond today, we celebrated dogs today, we covered all the bases today. Of course, public and at large, folks in the room, before we meet again, we will have had an election. So the primary election, of course, is coming up a week from tomorrow. Go to vote411.org to learn the positions that the current candidates stated in response to the League of Women Voters questionnaire. Please don't forget to vote. It's a lot easier to vote now in Michigan. You can go sign up with just some ID, so go, go, go vote. And on the, I just, I'm gonna end up, I'm gonna have to write this all down, because I've got so many thoughts in my head, but I, I want to say, driving down Lake Shore Boulevard comes up a lot here in this room. And one of my primary concerns is, because we don't know what the lake is going to do, yes, we're moving a piece of Lake Shore Boulevard away from the lake, but the junction point at Holly and Lake Shore Boulevard, and the space behind Lakeview Arena, and the area there, right behind on Lake Shore Boulevard Fair and Lake Shore, we don't know what that could look like in three to five years. And I'm greatly concerned about that. And I'm concerned that the future is not gonna look like the past, and that we may have a six-inch rainstorm in three hours, which now happens in our part of the world, and what's gonna happen when that happens, and that we, in leveraging so much investment in the way that we've been doing it so far, we might not have a good cushion to adapt to that. And so, I voted no on moving Lake Shore Boulevard primarily for that, well, before that reason. I voted yes tonight, because I hear the need for continued dialogue, and that we are, in the regulatory framework we're in, this is a way to have that dialogue. But I'm gonna keep bringing up that we don't know what the lake is gonna do, and I hope that we can, going forward in our budget, have even maybe more cushion around what the lake might do, or giant rainstorms. And lastly, on the question of brownfield development, the cheap way to manage contaminated land is to throw some plants on it. I mean, you can see that all around, not even cement, not even capping and stuff. You put on, there's particular varieties of plants, switch grasses, they're called, and certain kinds of willows, that actually suck up the chemicals when you put them in the ground. It's called phyto remediation, as in photosynthesis. There may be cheap ways to, if it turns out that we don't get permission, maybe we will. Here's like, it sounds like we might, but we don't know that for sure. There are tools that other communities use, tool, communities that have many fewer resources than our community. For example, Gary, Indiana, which is another groundwork community, steel mills, it's where our iron ore ended up, in fact, has done a lot of phyto remediation projects. They don't have a lot of money, there's ways of pulling these contaminants out of the ground. So I just, I'm putting that out there. If this development project should not happen, there are other options out there for us. And thanks again for all this community, and thank you, Barry, about the comment on planning commission. I tried to bring that up too, but that, he's exactly right. We get stuck, we're at the very end of the line, and it's that, the conversations at the planning commission that are really important.
Another fine meeting as usual. A lot of work tonight, a lot of, a lot of decisions made, you know, like I said, the Dow Chemical, it's been for sale for a long time. It's about finding the right person to do, to build it, a person that's scared of it, wants to work with us, wants to do what they got. We've been talking about it for years, as far as lake levels, yes, lake levels are going up and down. They were down, way down, many years ago, and now they're way up. Lake fluctuates, mother nature, you never know what it's gonna do, and that's what the city's playing for. You know, Founder's Landing is, they built everything up high, just in case something happened. And again, I'm not an expert, but I know Founder's Landing, they didn't do much digging, they just covered everything with fresh dirt, and then dug into the fresh dirt, didn't dig anything down. Just a, wasn't a contaminated site like Dow Chemical was, but it was a train yard. Could be diesel fuel, could be oil, but everything's built in there, years ago. Iron ore pellets, I used to walk through it all the time as a kid, you know? And as far as things happening in the city, the fence is still up, I guess, on lighthouse, on the edge of lighthouse part, because it's needed for fall protection, you know? I think fence keeps people from climbing up there. If the fence came down, which Verito wants the fence down, they would encourage people to climb up there, and maybe fall down on the rocks, and we have more emergencies the fire department has to take care of. We don't need that, you know, so, I mean, that could be a reason why, that, I see that all the time with the black rocks. The city can deal with a lot of erosion on there, and the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec and the Presque Isle Board tried to do something about that. They put little logs there to prevent people from climbing on the dirt. What people do, use the logs to climb dirt more. So, they put barricades across, they're permanent barricades to keep things off there, just what cities do, again, protect people from people. So there's deer on, off the island, I've seen, I remember the park was there for years, zoo was there, you know, there's a deer park, now deer's come and go. I've seen deer all, there's deer all over town. They come and go, I've seen flocks of deer running off the island, running on the island, so, the city doesn't have any plans of going out there, shooting on them. They just, the deer come and goes, they go. I agree, feeding them is not a good idea, a lot of people do that. They feed the geese, they feed the deer, everything, but hard to stop them. As far as Mr. Verdo, you love complaining about, talking about repeating yourself. As far as I know, you've been repeating yourself for a long time. You've complained about every city manager we've had, every mayor we've had, every commission we've had, everybody, but yet, you've never actually stepped up to run for commission. You can run for commissioner if you want, Mr. Verdo. I mean, it's up to the city to elect you or not. It's not up to us, we get elected by the city. So, Mr. Verdo, if you want to make a difference, I suggest running for city commission, you can voice your opinion all you want. If people don't elect you, it's not a problem, again. And if you don't want to live here, if you'd like to complain about us, Mr. Verdo, then, you know, you're welcome to leave anytime you want, we're not keeping you on purpose. You know, you're welcome to leave if you want, we don't want to lose, you know, you're, you know, if you want to leave, you can leave. There's, and property development, Dow Chemical, the city's compared a lot to Traverse City. Traverse City has a lot of commercial development along the lakefront, and people don't like that. So that's why I think a lot of people, Verdi's trying to do more housing, people want more housing, develop in, develop with the area, so, that's what Verdi's doing, doing more housing. There could be some commercial sprinkling on there, we don't know yet. They'll deal with the planning question, they'll get it all done, they'll pass all the, go by the laws, do everything right, and they'll do everything a good job, and I think they'll do a good job with it, and as many of developers do housing all around town, you know? So it's up to, not to Verdi, they're mostly commercial, but they'll do a good job whatever they do.
Thank you. Mr. Campana?
Well, as usual, tonight, there's a couple people took cheap shots at the city. Just want to reply to a couple of them. One comment is, you know, why aren't my streets being fixed? And one of the things I've learned, this is my sixth year in the commission, we have a staff of people here, we have an engineering department, has a lot of expertise. Every year, we go on a tour of the streets, they show us how they judge these streets, how they rate them. We see the plans for when they're gonna fix them, we have a priority plan, and there is a definite way of doing this, the correct way, and they are doing this, and if you have a bad street, sooner or later, it's gonna get fixed. And they have a method, they have a plan for this, and, and they are doing the best they can with the money we have. The last three, four years, we have actually, I've seen where we're bonding more money for streets. To me, that's a good thing. As far as the DEQ, again, with their monitoring of the Cliff Dow property, I have so much confidence in them, that's the other thing. We have numerous work sessions every year, not numerous, we have work sessions every year. We have meetings and discussions about the condition of how Cliff Dow is coming and doing, and again, the people at the DEQ are very competent, competent, and have faith in their decisions. Lastly, I'd like to congratulate the city captain of detectives, Mike Kohler, who just last week retired, and the years that he served, the city was very, he did a very good service for them, so congratulations. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor Pro.
Well, that was a long meeting. The only thing I would request is that the city, I think the city attorney and the city, the city attorney mentioned about marijuana, we got an email the other day, and I think the next step is, is it gonna be a work session again?
Yes, I do think the next step should be a work session.
Okay.
At any time.
Cool, I'm ready for setting that, so that's all I got.
Couple things tonight. One of the things that I'd like to kind of reiterate as far as the moving of the road on Lake Shore Boulevard is the new system that they have set up there with the swales, the rocks, the swales, the, everything leading up to the bike path, and then eventually to the road. All of that is done for a reason. Number one, to stop the waves from crashing in and taking away, you know, the embankments there. But it's also a good, if you can, if you can call something like this a good side effect, it helps with some of the remediation on the property down there. So, Mother Nature is going to help by leaching through, the waves coming through, through the soils, through the sands, and pulling some of those dusty toxins that were left from generations past, in its own, in its own timely manner. I think that's something that, you know, we have to have faith in, in Mother Nature as well, and coming back and taking care of herself a little bit as well. So, that's something that I was really excited about as far as the makeup of that road system, when it eventually gets moved, I just wanted to bring up tonight. This past weekend was humongous, not just for Marquette area, but Marquette County, with all of the activities going on. Town was crazy, man, between Art on the Rocks and Outback, and the Blueberry Fest, and everything going on up in Ishbaming and Nagani, it was just a banner weekend, and I just can't say how much I appreciate all the volunteers that helped put those events on, and, and make things happen in that manner. You know, the arts and culture that comes along with the, just what was going on in Marquette, excuse me, in Marquette alone was just phenomenal. So, applaud to all of those people that did the hard work and put the time in there. And if you were stopping by, any of the stop signs or stop lights that were host to the Marquette Fire Department, as they did their fundraising for the muscular dystrophy this past weekend, thank you for your contributions. I know from a post today on social media, they took in close to eleven thousand dollars, which is just amazing. And I, I'm honored to go out and sit with them and, and meet the people, and take anything from pennies to twenties. It was just a great event, again, this year, and I want to thank the fire department for all their efforts, and, and the other commissioners that volunteered to do that as well. Hats off to them, and, you know, just really proud of the area that we live in and what, what we bring back to the community as well. Thank you.
I turn.
You're all yours.
So, the only comment I have is that I do listen to the commissioner com, you know, when you guys make public comment, I hear you. Cliff Dow is gonna be a continued negotiation. I'm hoping we can have some more affordable options. They may not be the most affordable options, but there may be some other opportunities within the city for those, and I hope that you don't give up on us. I would like to see, we've talked about it before, committee on housing affordability, so I'll be bringing that up in our budget talks and our strategic planning talks in the coming weeks. I know it's in one of our strategic plans as a future goal, and I'd like to see that move forward sooner than later, especially with some of the comments tonight, it brought it to the forefront of my mind. Thank you.
Well, let me, let me clean up with a couple things, if I can. Somebody had made a comment, I think Ms. Luttenberger, about why not start a zoo again at Presque Isle. Used to have one way back, and I think we, well, it was closed because of animal cruelty. Animals were not to be kept in zoos like that, and they, they closed the zoo at Presque Isle, so maybe we don't want to do that. And with all respect to Ms. Brum, we use environmental engineers from the, quite literally, from the EPA, from Eagle, we have Trimedia there that's still doing constant monitoring, and this is deep well monitoring, and those well locations move around to a given set pattern that, you know, the city has got to feel that it has taken every step of due diligence it can and should be taking with that property. We understand the history of the property, we understand the problems with it, but we also understand that it does have potential, and that's what we're working to try and uncap. Comment made about, well, you're gonna sell it at a sweetheart price. By charter, we cannot sell property any less than eighty percent of appraised value. Again, not any less than eighty percent of appraised value. The last piece of property we sold, I think it was Two Way down in the south end, the Founder's, was at full value, and I believe we're setting up for full value on the next set too. So, doesn't happen. Purchase price of the hardwood, trying to make money, another comment I think Ms. Brum made, as I recall, I was not on the commission at that time, the overwhelming reason to buy hardwood at that time was to provide recreational opportunities. That was the big reason for the purchase of the property. A secondary reason was the ability to carve some of the pieces out that didn't really fit the recreation mode, that could be developed, and to use that to help offset the price of the property. So, as I recall, that was the reason, but again, that report is online, I'm sure, and if somebody wants the exact verbiage, it would be there. You know, we talk about affordable housing, and I think sometimes we're hunting unicorns, because I don't know what affordable housing is. The federal government will define it, I believe, as the ability to spend one-third of your money after taxes on housing. So you can do the math, and that's what affordable housing equals out to be, and it's different for everybody from that standpoint. And sometimes, I think we have folks that overreach. They want to have the big house, and they're kind of mad they can't get the big house, because the big house is too expensive. So that doesn't make the big house unaffordable, it makes it unaffordable to them. So we have to be able to even that out, so that people have opportunities. We certainly need to get there. But we also need to understand that that's a term that different people look at and use differently, and federal government will say one thing, somebody trying to buy a house will say another. Overwhelming consideration in the city of Marquette is that over fifty-five percent of our property is tax-free. That's the parks, that's the churches, that's the nonprofits, that's the problem. So, we're trying to float the city of Marquette and the city services that we offer on substantially less than what any other city would be able to do. That's the overwhelming problem. So, when you hear people say, let's take Cliff Dow property, for example, and make it into a park, that's the people's park. Good idea. Where's the money? Because all you're doing is adding property that potentially can be helping everybody and taking that money away. So, whether we end up there with condos or we end up there with a different mix of use, we'll get there. And then what we did tonight was take that first step to get us there. I commend, uh, certainly, uh, Mr. Stackowitz for a good recap of, of how we got to where we did with founders, not founders, rather, Cliff Dow. But it also points out the problem, is that people don't become interested until you get to the 11th minute of the 11th hour, when all of a sudden, I didn't know about it. You didn't tell me. Where have I been? It hasn't made the media. It's been all over the media. Pro Tem talked about how many meetings she's been at, and she was only here for six years. I'm into my, almost my eighth, so I can add more on top of that. So, the whole thing centers around, when you circle back to it, citizen engagement. People have to be willing to be engaged. They have to be willing to sit on the committees. They have to be willing not just to come in here and complain, but to sit down and do the work. I was very proud today to be able to welcome a new committee member to the DDA because we've got somebody else that's gonna be a positive producer for the city of Marquette where we need the help. And that's true for all of our city committees. What I did not read tonight was a long litany of the vacancies we have in every committee, and I'll read that again next meeting. But that's where we need the help, and that really gets to the height of the problem. And of course, the good news tonight was paying the bond off for hardwood. That is huge. That's $660,000 a year that we will be saving will help offset that million-plus from We Energies. Good stuff. It was a good meeting, a long meeting. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. Thursday, August 8th, we're going to have our next, uh, scrap tire collection at the, uh, flink farm at the, uh, rubbish site on Pioneer Road. That will be from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So, anybody that has tires they wanna get rid of. And I was hoping Mr. Ludenberg would stick around because when he brought up Division Street at the last meeting, we answered the question at the end of the meeting, and he was gone then, too, but, uh, that young, or that woman's, uh, street, if I recall, is in the capital improvement plan for 2021. So, it's there. And he, again, didn't hear my answer, so he may bring it up again at the next meeting. And lastly, I just wanna thank you all for the continued support with, uh, moving ahead with these projects, and, uh, I, I think it's safe to say that, that, I mean, we have, in large part, um, sold off or began development, I think, on just about everything we can up to this point. I don't know that there's a lot of property out there yet left that the city owns to, to develop. And I, and I thank God that we had that property to sell and to develop because when We Energy announced their closure, we were losing, uh, one, about $1.6, $1.7 million in taxes annually, and, and in order for us to maintain the services that we provide, which help develop, uh, identify or, uh, community we have, uh, we need that income. And going to your comment, Mr. Mayor, that over 50% of this community is non-taxable, basically 50% of this community pays to run the city. And if we don't have that tax base, at least a 50%, we aren't gonna be able to maintain the services we provide, and we won't be the community that, that, uh, you've come to enjoy. And I'm happy we were able to do that. I hap, I'm, I'm thankful the commission has been supportive to, to sell these properties and to, uh, create some developments. I'm thankful that groups such as Veridia and, uh, HRS are willing to, uh, invest in this community. And I think it says a lot about a community when, when people wanna develop in your community. Um, it isn't solely to make money. It's, it's because they believe in the community. I know for a fact that, uh, the Veridia group loves Marquette. They want Marquette to be successful. They're not out just to make a buck. Uh, it is part of their plan, but, uh, and I know for a fact that if they weren't spending their money here, they'd be spending it somewhere else. So, I'm glad they're spending it here. So, thank you.